We will now call the meeting to order. As a reminder, if you would like to speak before the council tonight, please complete a blue speaker request form and give it to the clerk prior to the item. Mark?
Councilmember Lorimer.
Here.
Councilmember Rigby.
Here.
Mayor Protem Yao.
Here.
Mayor Plott.
Here.
For now, Councilmember Tesari is absent.
And he will actually, he's coming out from LA, but we'll make it probably within the next hour or so. All right, we'll now move to item number three, which is our 3.1, our fiscal year 2020 to 2021 budget workshop. This is our second budget workshop. It's in goal setting, general fund, and capital improvement plan. And this will be presented by Amanda Wells.
Good evening, mayor and council members and those in attendance. Amanda Wells, finance director. Tonight before you on item 3.1, we have our budget workshop number two. That says number one. Well, that's the first typo. So this is budget workshop number two, which is goal setting for the general fund.
There's four typos. Find all of them. I'll be there.
It's not working.
A Girl Scout could do it.
Uh-uh. Is it on? Oh, it's not on.
It's on.
Is it on? Well, you can advance it.
Yeah.
So the agenda tonight, we're going to go through department updates from city clerk and communications, city manager's office, community development, finance, talent and attraction. We're going to go over some general fund revenue expenditure and reserve projections for the general fund outside of the restricted fire fund. We're going to look at a police staffing model update. We're going to bring back some specific options that will work here in Eastville. And then we're going to look at some funding options down at the bottom of our budget when everything falls out. What am I doing wrong? Sorry, technical difficulties. Well, you're next up.
Good evening, city council. I'm going to do a quick update on city clerk slash communications department. So for the city clerk's office, we had a number of projects this past year, a lot of exciting stuff. So one of the big ones was our automated Form 700 system. So you probably noticed when it came time to file your annual statement, you got an email from a system called NetFile. We use them for our online filing of Form 700s. A lot of cities are tending to go this way now instead of doing paper filings. It's much more efficient and of course gets rid of the use for paper, so it's much more green. And this is for city staff, elected officials, and appointed officials. So the commissioner, city council, and city staff. Agenda management system. So this is going to be our first automated agenda management system in the city of Eastville. Currently, we kind of do it the old school way where we, everyone submits their staff reports and give them to the server and then I put it together. Now, this is an actual system from Granicus that you upload all the staff reports and it assembles it together. Very efficient, definitely the way that cities are heading towards. We're looking at full implementation in April, for the April 8th meeting, I believe. So we're just about ready to go. And this will also include a new landing page for all city council and commission agendas on the city website. So right now, they're all kind of separated, so there will be one page on the city website where you can access all the agendas. And if you looked at other cities who have Granicus, it's going to be similar to that where you'll get select the meeting body that you're looking for, and then you can select the agenda and whatever. So you've heard this probably in the past this year, but the relocation of city records, we moved all of our records from our storage facility to the Citrus property. The forepicture is when they got there, so we just kind of piled them everywhere. And then the after is when we organized them. So they're all on shelves and by department now, so if we need something, it's easy to find. And for future city clerk goals, we just released an RFP for scanning services yesterday, I believe. And so once we receive those back, we'll select a company to start scanning services. So the idea is to get that records room clean of records. So once we scan everything, our intention is to destroy them, and then we'll have everything digitized and much easier to access, so we don't have to send someone to the records room to pull files. We'll just be able to do it in-house. And of course, the big one this year, we're conducting the 2020 general municipal election. So once July rolls around, we'll be busy in the clerk's office. Communication accomplishments. So the 2019 State of the City event that we coordinated with the chamber, we have the city of Eastville website redesigned and the new mobile app. We developed brand guidelines, I don't know if you've noticed, but the staff reports and letterhead, and we're getting new business cards. They're all going to be consistent with the same branding guidelines, so you'll see that throughout the city now. Everything that's going out is going to have the same guidelines. We've increased internal communications for staff, so we've developed an employee newsletter that gets sent out once a month. And we also send a recap of council actions that happens after the council meeting, so that staff can be aware of what's happening at city council meetings, even if they're not attending. And we also recently rebranded the weekly newsletter, the Eastville Weekly, to the What's New Eastville. So we've been doing that for about three months now. It's going really well so far. We've been able to put a lot more stories and content that's a lot more meaningful by just doing it bi-weekly. So it gives us more time to work on it. Accomplishments continued. We did receive four different awards from Polaris, which is a communication award. So for video long form, video short form, for our branding, and for our city website. Videography accomplishments. So the development of the Did You Know series, that includes our two communication specialists, Bobby and Anisa. You've probably seen those on our Facebook page and Instagram. Restaurant preview videos, so those tend to be very popular when we know a new restaurant's coming. We'll interview the restaurant, get some pictures of the food. We usually get a lot of activity on our social media accounts when we do those. New onboarding video for new employees. So we, with changes in staffing in the last year, we developed a new onboarding video, so we have all the current staff members, current titles, so everything is accurate. So that's going to be going on pretty soon. As I mentioned, 2019 State of the City video, the economic development video. And we are the City of Eastville video. If you're not sure what that one is, we actually just finalized that one, and we have it here to show you. So hope you enjoy.
Make sure it's loaded. I would describe Eastville as transformative.
Everybody listens to the idea openly, and they're positive about it. And they think, okay, well, how can we accomplish that goal?
So much is getting done, and so much is happening.
It's just a great opportunity to be creative and use our imagination and really build out a city that we view as the city that we would want.
The city of Eastville is definitely a unique place to live.
It's like a healthy blend of spunk and sophistication. I think what makes Eastville unique and how it approaches problems and innovation is simply that they utilize innovation.
What I love about the city of Eastville is it is very family oriented. You'll see a lot of children running around at the parks, having fun riding their bikes.
There's no other place, I think, that you can have the great parks that we do and the great schools, and have that sense of community that a lot of other cities don't have.
There is amazing opportunity here, not only for families, not only for parks, but from the economic development standpoint, there is a ton of opportunity here.
One of the great things about our staff is that you can make what some might think is impossible happen.
Eastville is just new and fresh. It offers an opportunity. You really don't get that opportunity in Southern California very often.
Being such a young city, everyone has a chance to put their stamp on the city, and that's what excites people to come here.
Seeing what has been accomplished in a staff that might be a little smaller than other cities our size, what they've been able to do, to me, is amazing.
I got an opportunity to be a part of being on the inside of making the city the great city that I think it is and to being this amazing city that it could be.
People come to you and they want to do something, and you go, okay, fine, how do we do it? Let's make it happen.
Here, we want solutions that work.
We have a lot of things that we still want to accomplish, and I don't see anything standing in our way of what we want to do here.
We are the city of Eastville.
We are the city of Eastville.
We are the city of Eastville.
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 City of Eastville.
We are the city of Eastville.
So that is our We Are the City of Eastville video. We plan to use this on our website for recruitment page and our Engage Eastville website when that launches later this month. So feature, other future communication goals, and this is not going to be the title of it, Mr. Mayor, but it's going to be an update with the mayor video series. I know he doesn't like that title. We're working on it still, but we're going to do a feature on our social media of a one to two-minute interview with the mayor or other city council members, and we're going to look to be doing this once a month going forward. Promotion of Eastville's 10th anniversary. We're going to be 10 years old this year, so we're starting to planning on that. 2020 State of the City, Eastville 2040 engagement, and the Engage Eastville website that I mentioned earlier. And this is kind of a preview of what it's going to look like when it's launched later this month. So of course, the big project here is the Eastville 2040. This is mainly engagement tool for that, but we see this website expanding to other big initiatives and projects, so the 10th anniversary, we're definitely going to feature it on this website. And this is different from the regular city website, because this is more of an engagement tool with the community, and that's what it's designed for, and to let people engage on the project, know who the point of contact is, and to be able to, you know, we can ask questions and take surveys with people and feature content that normally wouldn't be on the regular city website. So you'll be seeing that launching fairly soon. That, that's all I have, unless you had any questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you, Mark, for all that. An awesome job on that video. That's, anytime you throw a video, I think it's the best way to get, you know, a very good traction and output and get, you know, good feedback. So that's a solid video. So yeah, if I make one record on the, and just kind of the, kind of the idea of, which came from our communications department, kind of a two-minute, three-minute segment. I didn't want to call the mayor, talk with the mayor. It sounded a little pretentious. It sounded a little pretentious, so like, well, I don't, you know, I think, you know, maybe communications with the council, and we have like two or three minutes, and we can just switch, we can rotate among our council members. And it's just kind of a spitfire, two, three questions.
Definitely.
And you can kind of just, you know, share your thoughts and opinions on whatever question they throw at you, so.
Definitely a working title. We will change it when we finally.
No, but the concept's the right concept, for sure. It's a good concept, so I think that'll be very well received. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Crystal Adams, senior management analyst with the city manager's office, and I'm here to talk about a quick little update and a year in review. One of the biggest items that we have in the city manager's office is our strategic plan. It was adopted in November 2018. Since then, we've provided quarterly updates to council, and actually, on January 8th, 2020, we conducted a review workshop where we were able to update the strategic plan with some new initiatives and goals. Costa San Diego, we were able to host two events at our off-lit property, nine course dining experiences. We held the first October 24th through 29th in 2019, and the second February 14th of this year. We also offer residential cleanup days in our partnership with Waste Management. So for the last year, it was May 18th, 2019, and September 21st, we accept e-waste, shredding, furniture, mattresses, and other items. For items that we do not accept, actually, residents get the opportunity to go to the landfill, and we give them a free pass to dump at the landfill that day. The next one will be in April. Upcoming events, our Eastville Leadership Academy is currently accepting applications. It will begin on April 16th and be on six subsequent Thursday evenings here in city hall. It's open to anyone who lives or works in Eastville that's over the age of 60. Also, something to look out for, we have the mural commissioned for our public arts project, January 2019. It's expected to be completed in September 2020, just in time for our 10-year anniversary. That's it for me. Any questions, I'm happy to accept them.
So any questions or comments? Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarification purposes, the city did not do Costa San Diego. It was a private event that was held at a city property. Correct? Thank you.
Thank you for that update.
Good evening. My name is Tina Gibson-Williams. I will be giving the update for the community development department. The team for community development is comprised of community enhancement and safety, building and safety, economic development, planning and public works. But what's interesting to note, or what I want to call your attention to, is we have 12 full-time employees, and we're also assisted by the very capable firms of Inn West and Michael Baker International. But also, Eastville is a culture where learning and growing is encouraged. So there are two student opportunities, one in community development, we have a Lewis Fellow. And then also, there's one part-time planning intern that is a student. So we have opportunities for youth to become engaged and to learn what city government is all about. They're doing an excellent job, and you will see the fruits of their labor coming up at an upcoming city council meeting. One task that we have accomplished in the year in review was to strengthen organizational development and effectiveness. And so the way that we were doing that was through the EXCEL. You'll hear a little bit about that later this evening. But what's key to note is the cut in permit turnaround times by up to 50%. We're able to do that by streamlining the development review process, coordinating what's happening internally, externally. Also, we're going to be able to offer a public portal, so that members of the public can log in and see what the status of their permits are. And then also, we'll be able to provide to council and to our community statistics from the EXCEL program. Second, to enhance community quality of life, we talked about the fellow in the first slide, but the Randus Lewis Fellow has put together a consolidated approach to everything that has to do with health in the city of Eastville. It is going to be consolidated into one place. It'll be a GIS interactive map that'll be linked to the city's website, where you'll be able to push a button and find out every information about all the different aspects of health. So it's something very exciting. So she is putting, Amber is her name, putting the finishing touches on that, and you'll be seeing that very soon as well. One other accomplishment is Eastville 2040. Other communities call it the general plan. This one is very specific to the city. It's Eastville, and it's our opportunity to be able to put our thumbprint on our future. What is Eastville going to look like in the next 30 years? So we began that in February 12th of this year, and if you want more information, I'll do my shameless plug for eastvill2040.com. In community development, we're also enhancing mobility and connectivity. We have five different areas I wanted to highlight for you this evening. We have 367 lane miles of roadway maintained in the city of Eastville in that timeframe. Also, opened the Limonite interchange. That was a $65 million investment into the city of Eastville. Also, 3.2 million square feet of slurry ceiling, so that our roads are smooth. And also, the Limonite Avenue Bridge aesthetics. You had that presentation at the last council meeting, where we're able to see how the bridge will look, or some conceptual designs for crossing the channel. But more importantly, we're going to be integrating Eastville with the surrounding communities and all of the infrastructure that's coming in and the development that's coming in from the ports. We are a key part of that, and the Limonite gap closure will help streamline that. Also, 255 encroachment permits. Anytime somebody wants to cut the street or they want to utilize our streets, we do issue an encroachment permit. But more importantly, what we want to know is we are coordinating anytime we have development with that, so we don't cut our streets. We are strategic about that, make sure that we don't cut it twice when you can cut once. So just to highlight some of the things that are going on here. Traffic safety enforcement education, so we have about six different areas. There are more, but we wanted to highlight these. The automatic license plate readers, there's 32 of those that have been installed. We have signal battery backup systems for our signals. There's about 43 of those. There have been traffic signal modifications. Also, walkability and safety, we've made improvements to our streets there for our residents and our business owners. There are 15 driver speed feedback signs that have been purchased, and they are installed at various locations in the city. Those are new. We had some existing, so there's 15 additional that came with this last year. And then also, as you're aware, the 4100 streetlights that were converted to LED. We received that money from WRCOG, and then we were able to receive a reimbursement for WRCOG of about $413,000. So that's going to be a savings to us over 20 years of about 4.4 million. In community development, we're also aiding and creating value-added development. Here, you see on the left, some of the development that has taken place in the last year, Lennar Homes, the station Sprouts at the Merge, and the Tailgate Music Festival. But not just development. We also have where we serve residents on a daily basis, anything from a water heater permit to a garden wall. About 3,000 people visited the counter, and we were able to serve them. So I wanted to give you, we do collect those statistics as well, so you know how we're doing in that regard. Some of the statistics, these are things that actually go to a discretionary hearing, things at the counter may never make its way up here, but we've broken them down for you to see what kinds of things are coming in, what kind of requests. But also, to the right, just a numeric value of about 43 projects that came in last time. But they have multiple different applications that are part of that, so being heard by city council, planning commission, and also some things that are approved administratively. We are diversifying our development opportunities. We have value-added development, again, some further information on that. So there's the industrial facility at 60 and Milken, and it's a speculative building. It's under construction. Also, what you see, the grading taking place right now at Hamner Place, our retail development. And then Sunshine Grounder Nurseries, one of the newest ones to be added. It is also due to have a grand opening coming up in May, but it has also received their certificate of occupancy as well. It's, I would say Sunshine Grounder is actually the third location in the empire. And also identifying creative revenue opportunities. So Hamner Place will be that creative revenue opportunity for the city. Stabridge Suites Hotel, four-star hotel. It has two rooftop opportunities for recreation and lifestyles. So you see one on the far right lower corner there, one up top, and then there's also one above the conference center. So it is a conference and event center as well. One thing to note about the Stabridge Suites is that the potential revenue opportunity to the city at 85% occupancy, this was presented to the council when it was approved, is, could be potentially up to 8 million if it was at 85% occupancy. And then elevating Eastville's dining experience. So down in the lower left-hand corner, we have the $71.3 million leakage. Everyone is familiar with that, but we've making great strides to reducing that number significantly. We have several restaurants that have been entitled this past year. Yoshihara, Japanese, Meat Fresh, Jinya Ramen Bar, The Griddle, Cafe Rio, Mod, In-N-Out, Witch Witch, Jono's, Tony's Chop House, East Brew Cafe. All of those are working to diversify and elevate Eastville's dining experience, and those are located at different centers throughout the city. And we partner with the Chamber of Commerce and the SCORE, very important, our business communities, Eastville, as well as our residents. So we have the Business Success Roundtable, which is hosted here at city hall, where we listen to the needs of Eastville's businesses. We have had approximately 120 attendees. And then also, we partner with SCORE, where we support local businesses. We have held 11 workshops, over 300 attendees, and these services are offered at no charge to Eastville businesses. And then, when we are attracting attention to Eastville, we're doing that in three different ways. At the ICSC Conference, it's the International Council of Shopping Centers, this is where we have made a presence, where we are marketing Eastville. The opportunity with the hotel did come from an ICSC meeting opportunity, so that's how, one of the ways in which we received the hotel here was through connections that started there and continued through our council and our city management team. Also, the Inland Empire Economic Partnership, the city of Eastville was a finalist for our Hamner Place. There you see us there with the award that we received that evening. So we will be striving to win that in the future, but we are definitely making our name known. And then also, we received the Polaris Award for Economic Development Video. So that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Counselors, any questions or comments? Councilmember Lorimer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Gina, for the presentation. Couple items, I was intrigued about the encroachment permits, 255, and the working to have one cut instead of multiple. Could you expand on that a little bit?
So anytime an agency or a developer needs to cut the street, they need to apply for what we call an encroachment permit. And also, also expands to anybody that wants to utilize the street for transportation. So if a street cut needs to take place, we try to coordinate those to make sure that we don't cut more than we need to. We've already invested city dollars in terms of slurry ceiling, et cetera, in repairing our streets, and so we want to just be mindful of that. Sometimes it can't be helped, but if you combine your land use decisions with that document, then you can be informed and make intelligent decisions.
Are we thinking about capitalizing on that any further? For instance, there have been, I've heard other cities have worked to, when they know when an encroachment permit comes in, for instance, that they lay fiber optic cable. Is that something that we're considering or that we could consider?
It is something that we can consider. I know we are considering that, for example, at the Hamner Place, making sure that when we make those decisions, not for Hamner Place and also for Limonite, that when we do put that infrastructure in, that we make amends for, make sure we have enough conduit, so that we can put through fiber optic and/or electrical and/or the utilities as well.
Okay. Thank you. A quick follow-up, also, I think it was on the same slide or soon thereafter, and that was the 4100 streetlights that have been converted, and they're also owned by the city now, is my understanding. Are there plans to, again, capitalize on this? Are we moving forward with, there are opportunities associated with that. Would love to see us move in that direction in capitalizing on all the different possibilities that are there, if we could have something brought back to us in the future, that'd be great.
You actually already have approved the use of many of the streetlights for telecommunications purposes, and we've streamlined that process. Unfortunately, it's not as profitable as it once was because the CUPUC regulated how much we could actually charge for those encroachment permits, and it wasn't as much as we were originally anticipating when we purchased the streetlights. But there are lots of options for that.
Yeah, I would like us to explore other options as well. I think it would be wonderful if we could truly move towards making our city a smart city, so.
Yes.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Gina, for that portion of the presentation. I have one quick question, and I think, I just, you had mentioned about the Hotel of Stabridge, and you mentioned that it was, that it was $8 million, and I just want to clarify that that was revenues, and if we're taking our transit occupancy tax, it's probably about $800,000 to the city specifically, then.
Right, it's TLT tax, right? And so it is an annual dollar amount, and we've worked with HDL to come up with that figure when we made the original presentation.
But in theory, it would be about $800,000, not $8 million?
So, yes.
That was, I just wanted to, the way I heard was $8 million.
So that would be coming into our pocket?
Yeah.
Not all of it.
Well, thank you for that. And I just want to make a quick comment. And so far, in the last three presentations that we've heard now, I think there's a recurring theme in what we've seen, at least in each portion of the ASP, of what's kind of going on, and that is, kind of, this is for the public to understand, is that there's a lot of branding and marketing of Eastville, right? Whether it's from the presentation of the communications department, or it's the development, economic development side, also, the news department as well. It, it's not just through the videos and through the website, rebranding, getting out there, but it's also investing in ICSC shows and getting out in, in, into the public. Uh, it's, it's also hiring an economic devel- development manager, Kimberly back there. So there's a lot that goes on, and what we're trying to do is, in, in this relatively good economy, we've been a good economy for relatively, you know, relatively since two thousand and twelve. Is really to take Eastville, which is actually somewhat, and I, I'm, I'm saying this in all respectful way, which is an unrecognizable city. Um, out in the investment public that invests money, um, don't know that Eastville exists, so we've made a very, very, uh, calculated decision to start really branding us, getting us out to the public, and the results of doing that is kind of what you saw on, on page you know, thirty-two or thirty-one of the slides, and seeing those different restaurants and seeing the hotels, yeah, third, page thirty-one, is you see all these things coming out, and I just wanted to, um, let, that those things don't just happen, that's not arbitrary. It's through a lot of the branding, getting ourselves out there, making, letting them know that, hey, we are here and getting that out there, so I just wanna give kudos to the to all departments that are involved, cause it's, it, it's, it's, it's involved with all departments that get involved in, in doing this. So, uh, just wanna say thank you for that, appreciate it, and, and that's, it's, it's a vision, a direction of this council, but it's, it has to, you know, in order for that to happen, it has to be a precise execution, so we, we appreciate that from, from everyone, so, thank you.
Okay, so now we're on to finance. So last year in May of twenty nineteen, the, the budget for the current year was completed. That budget document actually was completely different than any of our previous budget documents, there was a team in place here that attacked it and really made a really nice document, and that was rewarded in December of twenty nineteen with the G F O A Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. That is Government Finance Officers Association, which is a national association. In August of twenty nineteen, we implemented a new business registration software through H D L. In December of twenty nineteen, we went live with a credit card acceptance for our online business registration fees. And then in March of twenty twenty, we changed from a one-time annual renewal to a rolling renewal based on application date, so that we're not having an influx of people coming in in March. And there is no confusion as far as coming in in January and getting a business registration, then having to renew right away in March. Now they can renew every January, every year from when you apply. So that website is eastville.hdlgov.com. Here's a little look at it, um, when you go to our website, it will link you to these two little boxes here that are in red, one is online services. And the other option is to search for a business registration, if you would like to see if someone has a business registration out there. Once you go into the actual H D L website, you can register, renew, pay, close a business registration, or again, search for a registered business. In July through December, the entire finance team was working on our annual audit, and we completed the audit in December of twenty nineteen and issued our CAFR. And in January, we applied for the G F O A CAFR award, that is still under review, we won't know until July roughly whether we receive that. So for current year twenty twenty, we completed the twenty nineteen, twenty mid-year analysis. We presented that to council with our appropriation requests, and now in March, we've begun the budget process. Here we are, tonight, discussing budget. And then our goals for next fiscal year, we're gonna try to implement credit cards as a payment method at the front counter. Right now, we don't offer credit card payments and it's something we get questioned quite a bit from the public. Um, we'd also like to implement an interim financial reporting, right now, we bring you a quarterly treasures report, we would like to bring you a quarterly financial report, so the treasures report reports on cash, the interim financial report would report out on expenditures and revenues. And then we would like to R F P for a collection agency to ensure that any outstanding revenue is actually being collected. So I'm gonna pass this off to talent and attraction, unless you have any questions.
Any questions or comments, Amanda? Thank you so much, Mayor.
Good evening, council members and members of the public, we are going to be talking about talent, attraction and development. Better known as H R and risk management. I think the first update is mentioning that we did change the name to, recently to talent, attraction and development for many reasons, and number one priority is to strengthen organizational development and effectiveness. Since July fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, we've hired the following talent, some of which are sitting out in audience. An accounting manager, a management analyst, an executive assistant, intern for city manager's office and community development department, finance director and a planning manager. One of our goals is to enhance organizational development. We have began doing that by defining what we're working with is a consultant, his name is Jim Yule with Breaking the Chains, and he's helping us identify our organizational purpose, vision and values. This workshop began, um, March twenty-seventh with some of the non-exempt staff. And management staff will be attending a three-day workshop. Later, Jim will be coming to present to you in May and, um, following up to identify if you want to add anything to that workshop. What we've also done is, um, leadership and team-building workshops, some of which includes crucial conversations and core strengths training. What we're trying to move towards is a strength-based approach. And as you see on the photo there, we are utilizing the citrus property for some of the workshops, which um, has been very beneficial, as well as this council chambers as well. In addition to, um, more organizational development, we've partnered with several institutions and universities. C B U, University of Redlands and California, uh, University Riverside. What you did approve recently was a tuition reimbursement for staff. Um, I believe Jessica wa- received her C M C from that tuition reimbursement and other staff members are also taking advantage of that opportunity. Another key item we're trying to do is build efficiencies. With, through NeoGov, we've automated recruitment and the interview process. And we have also, um, created online performance management and onboarding, which helps with records retention. And as far as risk management, we've established a cost recovery program for streetlights, signage knockdown, hazardous material spills and have recovered about fourteen thousand dollars, more information to come on this later. Some of the goals in progress for our team is to transition from a boss-to-coach philosophy. Enhance employee safety through injury, illness and prevention. Create a heat illness prevention program and to continue to evaluate, um, and streamline processes. So we're looking into another NeoGov module, which is the H R I S system, which helps us be efficient. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Awesome, Ricky, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Going back to the, um, tuition one. I know you briefly mentioned one employee and, and I don't think the names necessarily matter as much, but just, that is being utilized.
Yes, it's being utilized.
Awesome, it's, it's good to see that being used, um. It's one of the things that I think as council, we really wanted to invest in our, our talent and not only by salary, but also by providing them opportunities to further progress and learn, um, and continue their education. Off of that also, do you know, are any of our, um, eh, employees that are utilizing that, are any of them utilizing it locally with specifically like Norco College or anything at this time, or do we have any type of?
It's more for, uh, certifications within their particular, uh, department or field for technical skills.
Okay, okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you, Angelica, for that presentation.
Alright, so now we're into section two, general fund revenue expenditure and reserve projections. So just as a reminder, if this was a dollar, Eastville receives eight cents of every dollar of property tax that's paid. So down here in the bottom, you can see the Eastville Fire Protection District, which is the first red arrow, and down below, it is the City of Eastville General Fund. We're not going to be talking about the Restricted Fire Fund today, just the, the general fund, so in the general fund unrestricted, two cents goes into, um, the general fund from one dollar paid in property tax. Sales tax, again, sales tax is seven point seven five percent. Eastville receives one percent of taxable sales into the unrestricted general fund. So for every one hundred dollars of taxable sales, one dollar goes into the general fund. So looking at general fund revenues by category. In here, we've got fire services, we're gonna take that out, but sales and property tax make up sixty-two percent of our general fund. Um, intergo- governmental or transfers from the county or other government agencies. Licenses, permits and fees make up eleven percent, franchise fees are five percent, use of money is two percent. Fines, penalties and forfeitures, two percent, and then other taxes is one percent, and that, that is the property transfer tax that comes in. So general fund revenues, just historically looking at it, uh, you can see that it jumped in twenty sixteen, seventeen to twenty seventeen, eighteen, that was the V L F revenue that we began receiving. And then it's remained fairly stable, um, if you could actually drill down into those numbers, there's a little higher amount in eighteen, nineteen, it dips off a little bit in the current year and that's due to some back taxes with the sales tax. Uh, the franchise tax board changed over to the California Department of Tax. And in that software change, when they did that, they had some issues allocating taxes into the right pools. So we will get those revenues eventually, but it took a little while to figure it out, eighteen, nineteen was a little bit higher because of that. So this is kind of a nice chart because it shows our reserve balances, that's the green line up top. And then the blue bars are, are general fund revenues year to year, so our reserves remain in excess of our annual, um, revenues. General fund expenditures by department, this has fire in it, we're gonna take them out. But non-safety makes up forty percent of our general fund, when we take fire out. Uh, non-safety actually makes up fifty-one percent of our non-restricted general fund. So law enforcement is forty-nine percent of the non-restricted general fund, public works takes up twenty-six percent. General government is non-departmental, those are expenditure items that can't really be attributable to one department. Um, city clerk, finance, city manager, talent and attraction are three percent, information technology is two percent, city attorney two, and then city council at one percent. General fund expenditures, you'll see a little blip here, in eighteen, nineteen, that was the year that we made the property purchases. Um, and then it dips back down in the current year and then we're expecting to go up just a little bit, mainly because of contract increases for fire and P D. So this is kind of another look at our reserves balances against our expenditures, so we're spending less every year than what's actually in our reserves. Those bars are made up of the categories of reserves that we have, unrestricted reserves are that top category in each bar. Committed reserves are in the middle, and the committed reserves are items that you take action on every year. Um, we have a reserve of eight million, I think, for the city hall. You could always go back and change that, you can make it lower, you can make it higher, so they are committed, but it's committed by council action. And then down at the bottom is our emergency contingency, which is based on fifty percent of expenditures, so you'll see it go up and down as our expenditure levels go up and down. Oh, property purchases. So this is just a look of, for next year, expected revenues and expenditures, revenues are exceeding expenditures. We have our emergency contingency reserve, civic center and library, pension alternatives, public safety rate stabilization, and those three green bars in the middle there, those are all the committed, uh, reserves by council, and then our unrestricted reserves are hanging out there. The fifty percent operational reserve is also policy-directed by, by the council. And if you'll notice, where those two arrows are, our emergency contingency and the unrestricted reserves are actually pretty similar in amounts. If you piled them on top of each other, they would actually cover us for about a year, so we're in, we're in a good place with our reserves. So the next step for budget process, we have established a budget target, which is status quo, we're not going to increase expenditures or, or decrease. We're going to have the departments review their fee revenues with finance, get their input and make sure that we are budgeting properly for fees. The departments will submit detailed expenditure budgets to finance. Uh, budgets will be reviewed by the city manager, finance director and department heads. We will calculate fund balances and then we will find out what falls out at the end, whether we, we have a balanced budget, we have excess fund balance in the current year or we below. So if we have fund balance available, the, the following presentations that we're gonna look at here are options that we could use that remaining fund balance for. So right now, I'm going to turn it over to Lieutenant Martin, he's going to present an update specific to Eastville for the police staffing model. Oh, sorry, if you have any questions.
No, okay, thank you, Amanda, appreciate the, the presentation, we appreciate the insight as well, so thank you, uh, Councilman Ricky.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Amanda, can you go back to slide fifty-seven, it's the one that shows the general fund expenditures, just for the public's information. I know you briefly touched upon the, um, eh, the increase in expenditures for two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, but can you briefly touch upon those properties and why that was, the expenditures that year were so much higher?
So that year is when we bought the citrus property and I believe the Palopolis. Um, and so those were actually paid for mostly with, uh, operating revenues that we had that year. And so those were capital, uh, project, or they're capital assets that we purchased, they now become an asset on our books. Um, and so those were land that is now the Hamner Place and then the citrus property that we have over next to Roosevelt High School.
Awesome, thank you, so just to reiterate, that was, those two purchases were made with general fund expenditures, yeah, were made with.
Fund balance, in a way, operational fund balance.
Operational funds, yeah, so I, you do see a spike, but there is a, a very good reason as to why you see that spike. And it was something that was directed by the council with recommendation of staff to look long-term as to our investments, um, so it's very, very neat to see that, yes, we did have an expenditure, but we were able to do all that within our operational fund, so, thank you.
It's just diversifying where we, instead of having a bank account or the stock market, we invested in, in our own city, because if we can enhance our city, our land values go up, so um, and, and we can use that land to do partnerships or do something unique for the city in the future. Uh, or over time, land values always go up, um, so, um, or they tend to always go up, um, for the long run, so it's a good investment.
Good thing it wasn't in the stock market right now.
Yes.
Yeah, and I think the other point to that is the scarcity of land remaining in Eastville creates inherent value just in that alone. Cause there's not much land that is left actually purchased, so, thank you for that comment and question. Lieutenant Martin, you're next.
Well, good evening, city council, city staff, members of the public. I'm Lieutenant Tim Martin and I'm here to provide an update for law enforcement and some staffing options. This is our current overall budget for our law enforcement services for the City of Eastville. It's to approximately ten point one million dollars, and that is a hundred hours a day patrol hours would accumulate to eight point three-three deputies per day, our deputies work twelve-hour shifts. Uh, we, this also includes two special enforcement team deputies. Our traffic team is also included, which is two motors, two sworn accident investigation, um, traffic enforcement deputies and two dedicated traffic C S Os. Our per patrol operations budget is six point seven million, and that's just for the parole, uh, patrol operations, the hundred hours a day. Patrol. At the last city council meeting, the Sheriff's Department Research and Development Unit did a presentation on the benefits of community service officers and how they can support and assist our sworn deputies out in the field by taking basically lower priority calls for service, which would free up our sworn deputies to handle the higher priority calls and also have them be available for proactivity. And when looking at a comparison from the sworn deputies and the community service officers, um, one of our first things we need to look at is the safety of the public. We need to ensure, even though we have community services officers out in the field, we need to ensure that we have uh, enough sworn deputies out in the field to handle multiple critical incidents at any given time. And then next is the safety of the deputies, we need to ensure that we have enough deputies out in the field that they can provide backup to each other on critical incidents. And incidents that, uh, put our deputies at risk, and also the safety of our community service officers. We wanna make sure that they're not going through calls for service where they're suspect still on. And also the safety of our community service officers, we want to make sure that they're not going to cause for service where they're suspects still on scene. And that they handle the low priorities and pass calls. And then we also looking at for future growth, when with the addition of uh hotels and added restaurants. Our calls for service will go up, we don't anticipate them going up substantially, uh but we will have additional calls for service. And then also, we want to be fiscally responsible to the citizens of the City of Eastville. These, to explain what a community service officers do, these are the type of calls that they can handle. Uh these are all basically no suspects that are on scene type calls. They can handle past vehicle burglaries, stolen vehicles, past thefts with no suspect information. Frauds with no suspect information, runaways, missing person, mail thefts, vandalism, they transport arrestees. They can also transport mentally disturbed persons to our E T S. Uh they can handle traffic collisions and tra- and conduct traffic control. Uh parking citation, vehicle toes, evidence collection and scene processing. That's just some of the uh job duties that a community service officer has. In two thousand and nineteen, what I did was, I really got into the weeds, our research and development team that did a presentation, they kind of gave me an overview. Of what a C S O can do, but I looked at the twenty-four thousand calls we had last year. I separated all the calls for service that would qualify in the low priorities for a C S O to handle. And, sorry, and out of those calls for services, twenty-four thousand five hundred eighty-seven calls. I found two thousand six hundred and forty-nine calls that our C S Os would have been able to handle if they were on patrol. And that would have freed up our deputies who would have handled those twenty-six hundred calls. And this is just a small sample, the calls for service from last year that they could have handled. They could have handled five hundred and fifty-nine thefts, two hundred and twenty-four frauds. Two hundred and eleven vehicle burglaries, a hundred and thirty burglaries and a hundred and eighteen stolen vehicles. And this is, the next is how those calls kind of broke out during the week. When we look at how we deploy our 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 staff, it's all based on how many calls for service on what on each day. You can see it's pretty consistent, there's a little bit less calls for service on Saturday and Sunday. Um with the higher number of calls on a Tuesday later on, that they could have handled. And to give you an idea of what the C S Os cannot handle, these are party one and party two calls that sworn deputies have to handle. And using on these type of calls, we have multiple sworn deputies going to each call. And that would include murder, robbery, burglary in progress, assault with a deadly weapon, kidnapping, rape in progress, missing child. Attempt suicide, juvenile medical aid, injury traffic collisions. We're talking about like D U I or hit and run injury traffic collisions and a drowning. And this is our party one calls during the week, luckily, we average actually less than one party one call a day. And this is kind of broken out, and you can see it's pretty consistent throughout the week also for our party one calls. And that's the total of three hundred and sixty-two. And this is a breakdown of our priority call, uh one calls, I looked at them, most of our party one calls uh end up being between six P M and midnight. With our, the fewest between midnight and six A M, and we look at all this when we decide staffing. Uh some of the party two calls that are handled by our sworn deputies, uh domestic violence, domestic disturbances. Mentally disturbed persons, suspicious person with vehicles, or suspicious vehicles. Suicide threats, alarms, unattended deaths, unknown troubles, disoriented persons and vicious jobs. And this is a breakdown of each one of the categories of priority twos, and we done it by each day of the week. And if you look, they're also pretty consistent throughout the week, uh with only about a difference of about a hundred total for the whole year from day to day. So this pretty much tells us that we need to have an even deployment throughout our week uh for our deputies. And this is a breakdown of the priority two calls. In the far right uh category is the alarms, which kind of throws us off a little bit. Because most of our alarms happen in the morning and they all the way up through the um early evening. But if you look at the six P M to midnight, that's when our more of our violent party two calls happen, our domestic violence, our mental mentally. Disturbed persons, our domestic disturbance, our batteries. Those handle, uh we handle most of those calls from six P M to midnight, with the fewest calls being midnight to six A M. Uh for our special enforcement team, this is the oh the part uh. Our special enforcement team handles robbery investigations, burglary investigations, crimes against persons. Indoor marijuana cultivations, they had twenty-one since January first of last year. That they were primary on, but they also insisted the Sheriff's Department Marijuana Eradication Team with Ten Ditchel in the City of Eastville. We had a total of thirty-one last year. Uh they conducts surveillance and undercover operations on every one of those houses. They do bait operations, we just had an operation at Homecoming where we occupied a vacant garage in the Homecoming. And we put a a vehicle in there with some tools and an individual stole those tools out of that vehicle, and our deputies made the arrest. Uh we conduct bike patrol, homeless outreach, quality of life, uh our set deputies are proactive. Uh they do parole and probation sweeps, warrant sweeps. They do compliance sweeps of sexual res- registrants, their two ninety P C registrants. They do gang investigation, narcotic investigations, and they also do special events, basically the interior security plan. For tailgate fest and picnic in the park. And the following is a distribution on options uh for the city to consider. Um basically. This is your current staffing level, the top line going across, the hundred hours a day is is eight point three three deputies. And then you have sworn, four sworn traffic deputies, two sworn set deputies, and then two C S O traffic deputies. And with a total personnel of sixteen point three three. If you look down each of the option all the way down, you'll notice that the total number of personnel per day, maximum personnel per day, is increasing on every option. So your next option, option one, is seven point three three deputies per day. With the same amount of sworn and set deputies and traffic C S Os, but you're gonna add additional two C S Os. Which gives you a total personnel per day of seventeen point three three. So those s- two C S Os will be handling the priority three and four calls that the deputies would normally be handling. And it would free them up from for other duties. Option two is a seven point six six. Um deputies per day, and the reason when we get the the fractions there is we have twelve hour shifts. And we also, because they don't work eighty-four hours in a paper, they work eighty. We have eight hour days on certain days at certain shifts, so that's why there's a different breakdown of hours. Um so option two is seven point six six deputies with four and four sworn traffic same, the same as before. Two sworn set, two C S Os, the additional two C S Os to assist uh patrol. And with the total personnels being seventeen point six six. And then, I'm sorry, on the first option, the city would have saved by adding the two C S Os. And the this slight reduction in patrol deputies, they would have saved five hundred and thirty-seven thousand. On option two, the city would save two hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Option three is increasing the patrol deputies per day to eight, with the same amount of sworn uh traffic deputies, same set deputies. And the same C S Os assigned to traffic, with an additional two C S Os assigned to patrol. For a total personnel of eighteen, with a total cost of eight point nine million. Which is about break even to what you're currently paying, which is just a slight decrease of one thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars. Option four, option four, five and six are the same staffing on patrol as one, two and three. The only difference now is, is an additional two set deputies. Our set team is inundated with investigations currently. And they need assistance in helping them. Uh so an additional two sworn set deputies to option four, so you'd have seven point three three deputies. You you add two sworn set deputies and the two C S O, with a total cost of nine point one million. Which is an increase to the city budget of a hundred and forty-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Option five is seven point six six deputies per day. With an additional two sworn set deputies and the two additional C S O patrol deputies. And your total is nine point three million, with an increase to the city budget of four hundred and fifteen thousand. And they show the total personnel for that day to be nineteen point six six compared to sixteen that you have currently. So you're having over three additional personnel per day. Option six is eight deputies per day. With the two additional set deputies and the two additional C S Os to patrol, for a total of twenty personnel per day. The co- total cost is nine point six million, with an increase to the city budget of six hundred and eighty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Any questions?
We've got some questions here, thank you, Tim Martin for that.
Ho- hopefully I made sense, I was, I'm not a mathematician and.
Uh I think it's pretty clear, but I'm sure we'll have questions, just in case it wasn't, so appreciate it. I guess I'll start uh Councilman Rigby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh thank you very much for this, Lieutenant, I know that it is very time consuming going through almost twenty-five thousand radio calls and figuring out what they were. And sorting them and and going through those. Um I just wanted to kind of share and remind my colleagues that as we look at this. Um if we can go to that last slide, if as we look at this slide here, don't pick out one individual column. Of um the the first one, two, three, four, five columns. And look at those numbers and really compare them, I think the thing that we need to really compare and look at is that next column, total number of personnel. Um because I think sometimes if we if we look at if we're decreasing patrol deputies, uh sometimes it can be a concern for people. Um in reality, and correct me if I'm wrong, Lieutenant, but in reality, most criminals are not gonna commit crimes when there's a black and white car right in front of them. Uh most of the time, it's gonna be the people in this room, maybe speeding or something that may unfortunately get a ticket from a. Um a patrol deputy or a traffic deputy. But we've seen over the last little while that our set team has been extremely busy. And I think that's one of the areas that we really need to focus on, as we recently did, and that was. The instance that you shared was just one instance of what they've done night after night of uh the instance in the Homecoming. Um but we're dealing with, we we've seen an increase in marijuana grow houses, we've seen an increase in just a additional crime. That can be better um better dealt with through our set deputies, not to discredit our patrol deputies. But can be better dealt with through our set deputies than our patrol deputies, because our set deputies are the ones that are actually investigating, that are sitting on. Um tips that they get, uh things like that, so um if if I could recommend anything or even put it out there. I know that there's probably additional questions and comments from my colleagues, but I really like option number five. Um that we increase our set deputies and we increase our overall personnel by over three uh three deputies. Um and I think that can really help, and there's there's a number of reasons that we need to increase our set deputies. And I think that 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 one is kind of the the best option um for us to look forward to. The other thing too that I'd like to mention is is depending on what our our consensus is on the council and what our our recommend- recommendation would be. I would like to see this presentation, if we can, as well as our thoughts, our recommendation, go before the Public Safety Commission. To see what kind of input they have before we do any final adoption, and I appreciate this coming to us first. Because if it goes to the Public Safety Commission before we deal with expenditures and revenues, the Public Safety Commission can say, hey, we wanna go with option number seven and add. Um you know, a whole lot more than what's up on the board, and that puts us in a tough position, so. Um I appreciate this coming to us, so we can look at all the revenues, all the expenditures and not just regarding public safety. Uh but I would really like to see this, depending on what our consensus is tonight, to see this go, this whole presentation go before the the Public Safety Commission.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Lorimer.
Uh thank you, uh Mr. Mayor, and uh th- thank you, Lieutenant, for providing this breakdown, it it's very helpful. And um it's actually something I've been looking for for a long time in in terms of being able to see the. The actual number of sheriff personnel in the city um per day. And because often we we see on social media that we have four officers in the city and that's just not true. Um that that is true if you look only at the the deputies on shift, but we we have many more uh black and whites in the city. And um we should also remember that we have neighboring jurisdictions that also utilize the Sheriff's Department. And they can come over and vice versa in in cases of emergency. But um I I did want to clarify and because it. On the patrol deputies per day column, um. The, for instance, between option four and option five. Um the breakdown of being able to have four deputies on at any given time. Where where which one of those options is that, so so that we make sure that everybody has backup?
Uh with the two shifts, option five, you're gonna have four deputies. All twelve hours, all four deputies will be working twelve hours on one shift. The other shift, you have three deputies working twelve hours and one deputy working eight hours. So there'd be a four hours where um per day that you'd only have three deputies on, just the four hours. Option four is you're gonna have eight hours, you're gonna have three deputies work uh twelve hour shifts on one watch, on both watches. And then uh two deputies, one on each watch, working eight hours. So you have a four hour uh timeframe on one watch where there's only three deputies, and you also have a four hour. Um the four hour gap where you only have three deputies on the other watch also.
Okay, thank you. Um I I did wanna echo uh Councilmember Rigby's comments about the. I think the the necessity and the importance of bringing on more set deputies. Um a lot of the the releases that the residents see and that in in terms of the uh grow houses. Those busts um are done with through the set deputies and so some of those operations that Councilman Rigby was mentioning. Um and if we can do more of that, uh I think that that is money well spent, so. Um those are my comments for now, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Yeah, I have actually a few comments as well, I, one thing I want to take into consideration, I'll just use an example of option five since we've been discussing that. Um you know, we're also, also as in that, as is every year, there's there's gonna be a potential increase. So we're looking at three to five percent is what's kind of being discussed right now from Riverside County Sheriff. So if the total cost right now is ten point one million and you add the option five. Uh we'd be looking um at somewhere in the ballpark of ten point five billion in total cost, then take that and let's say it's somewhere in the four percent marker. The add another four hundred thousand, so as we're doing this budget, consider the fact that our budget will be somewhere around eleven million. So you have to add four hundred more thousand dollars to the total cost. Given that, uh saying that though, I I think, I I do agree, I think the having adding more set deputies to this is is really crucial. Uh you know, after hearing the remarks from Lieutenant Martin and having discussions, seeing what's been going on over the last several years, as far as marijuana grow house. Um we've been, you know, fortunately, unfortunately, we've been busting a lot of of these grow houses. And uh but there's also other responsibilities within the set teams, and and I want to make sure that we're not being reactive. And being inundated with these things, I'd rather be proactive, and the way we be proactive is having more on foot and and being proactive. So they can focus on gang related activities as well, being very proactive, doing those checks, uh to make sure our city can be the safest uh city possible. I think regards to the adding C S Os, I think that's a great way of efficiency, right? So right now, as it currently stands, our patrol and our sworn traffic deputies are utilizing some of their time in things that they really shouldn't really have to do. And so they're becoming inefficient because we're not having enough C S Os. And so the C S Os is a is a cost effective way to take up some of the load to allow our our uh. Our patrol deputies and our and our traffic sworn deputies to be more efficient in the things that they should be doing, some of the priority one calls and things like that, so. I think the option five, kind of as Councilmember Rigby had mentioned, it it sets it hits, it sets both those, so does option four and option six. But nevertheless, I think I think that would be the right direction if we were continuing to move forward. I'd like to see what uh you know, what our Public Safety Commission thinks as well. Uh but yeah, I think great presentation, thank you again for, I know it took a long time. I don't, I can't even imagine how many data points you had to go through in order to get that, but it's gotta mean somewhere in the couple thousands of data points you had to put together in order to get that. So uh I we appreciate that, that information is pretty, it's very in-depth and very calculated, so thank you. Yeah. Uh, Mayor Potemiao.
Um, I, I don't have any questions, um, and we, we have discussed this previously. So thank you for the information. And I, I, but I do wanna mention something as, as you briefly explained to Councilmember Laurie Moore earlier, the difference between option four, option five, and option six. Um, I was, I was looking at option four and five, but, um, just for public knowledge, is it accurate to say that for option four, we will have to reduce hours during daytime?
Yes.
Okay. In, in that case, I, um, I am leaning towards option five, but again, I would, I same thing, I would love to hear from our Public Safety Commissioners as well. Yeah. Thank you for this.
So we'll take this to the next Public Safety Commission. And then we'll probably bring it back to you for some direction because a- as we experienced when we went from ninety hours to a hundred hours, we need to take this to the Board of Supervisors, but, um, during their budget process so that we can, uh, e- empower our lieutenant to attract the, the best set officers or set deputies and CSOs to our city as quickly as possible. So.
Thank you, Brian. So Eric, I'm gonna need some help. I, I kinda might throw a curveball here because I noticed there's a lot of people out here and, and we still not quite finished. I know there's the last section here, which is the funding options. I, I would like, I know Councilmember Tassari's gonna be here later, uh, and would like to have him here for this portion. I know there's also one public comment, so I wanna hear the public comment on this particular item. And then if we can, I guess the direction I need is if we can just kinda put this table this to the end of the meeting and then we can address everything else and then get back to this. I mean, is there any direction that I need? And, and wanna make sure that's okay with my colleagues as well.
Yeah, that's absolutely appropriate. Um, it'd just be, um, good to, to state where later in the agenda you'd like to place this, if it's going to be after your, uh, council business, um, or for council business and what, that's just the pleasure of the council.
I think, I think to make it a kind of proper, I'd say after twelve point two. So make it that item. So in between, based on the City Manager Report and our last business item, item agenda. Would that be okay? Okay. With that, uh, would you mind hearing the, uh, public comment?
Yes, sir. One speaker card is from Gail Paulson.
Thank you. First, I want to really thank the council for your service to the community. I know you hear a lot of different things, but I appreciate your service. And city staff, thank you for your patience and, uh, skill in dealing with the public. Uh, my family moved here five years ago and everybody else in my family was working. I was the stay-at-home grandma who took care of our granddaughter. And I wanted to start taking her to some of the, uh, toddler time story programs. And I looked up Eastvale and the library here only has it on Saturday, which is because, for those of you who may not know, is because of the hours of the high school. They can only have the library, our public library open when the high school library is closed. So I ended up going to Corona to their story time. I've talked to other, uh, caregivers, other parents who actually have gone to Chino Hills for their, their story time. And I really think that story time is great, having a library is great because reading is so important. I now volunteer at my granddaughter's elementary school, her kindergarten class on quote, "wacky Wednesday," unquote. And I help, uh, the teacher log the kids into the computer lab so that they can learn computer skills. And it takes time and kids need reading skills also. And a lot of people think that technology is changing. We don't need reading. We need the internet, but you need to know how to read for the internet. And I think the library also would serve two other purposes, actually three other purposes. One, it's a good way for caregivers to meet each other, stay-at-home parents. We could also use the library for a community meeting center so we're not so reliant on J C S D and the community center. And also during the recession in two thousand seven, two thousand eight, a lot of people lost their jobs. They didn't have money. They didn't always have internet access. A lot of people went to the library to use the internet there to look for jobs. And we really need that. It really serves a variety of purposes. So I'm the big, big, big proponent of having a library and having funding for it. And on and aside, just for all of you, the friends of the Eastvale Public Library's next fundraiser is at Panda Express on March twenty-fifth. And for everybody, including all of the residents, please make sure every egg roll counts. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. I bet you Felicia, she, she told you to say that the very end there. Well, she owes ya. She owes ya. Good plug, good plug. Thank you. It was March twenty-fifth, correct? Perfect. Thank you.
No more comic cards.
Okay, at this time then we'll take a five-minute break and we'll get back and we'll resume, we'll resume to item five, which is our invocation. Perfect. That works. Okay. So five minutes, be back here and we'll, we'll get right to this agenda. Thank you, Brian, for that. All right.
No problem. You're welcome.
Okay, we will now continue into our council meeting agenda and we will move to item number five. And that'll be tonight's invocation by Pastor Mark Lee of Vantage Point Church.
First of all, uh, Mayor Potemiao, uh, Councilman Lorimer, Councilman Rigby, I just wanna say thank you for all you guys do, but in particular, uh, Mayor Plot and Brian Jones, uh, City Manager, you guys bailed us out big time by making sure that Edison did not shut off the power on Sunday. So huge thank you to you guys. And, uh, if you guys could accept gifts, I might be tempted to give you guys one week's offering, but since you can, you know, that's pretty much off the table.
Pastor, I, 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 I take hugs. I take hugs. So I, I get, those are free.
Okay, that's a lot of hugs then. That's a lot of hugging. Okay, why don't we bow our heads in prayer? Dear Lord, Matthew chapter nine, verse thirty-five says, uh, "Jesus went through all the towns and villages, teaching in their synagogues, proclaiming the good news of, of the kingdom and healing every disease and sickness." Lord, we live in a very scary, uncertain time right now with all the talk over the coronavirus, but we know that, Lord, that you are bigger than uncertainty. And in the, in the day of mass media, sometimes we don't quite know what to believe, but all we know for sure is that the spread of the coronavirus is not your will. Lord, even when you came to this earth, you came to proclaim the good news of the king- kingdom, and it says to heal every disease and sickness. So today we come to you now in Jesus' name, asking that you would touch and heal those who have been infected with the virus. And we pray for a quick recovery and re- return of strength to sick bodies. We pray for those who have already lost their life as a result of this virus, and we pray that you would comfort those families and bring them hope in the midst of despair. We pray those, uh, we pray for those who are fearful of getting sick, and we pray you would give the wisdom to each of us to know what to do practically to pre- to prevent the spread, but also to know what it looks like to fully trust in you. We pray for the medical community who are on the front lines responding to the virus, and we pray for their protection and for their peace. We pray for the leaders of our city and our nation to have wisdom and courage to respond appropriately and with love. And we pray for those who, who, who have called ourselves people of faith. And we have the challenge and the opportunity of modeling our Savior and people of faith who have gone before us. That during our greatest times of tragedy, that the people of faith have never lived in fear, but use it as an opportunity to shine our light and to serve those people who are need. Open up doors for us to share your love in practical and intangible ways for our greatest desire is to be just like the one who gave his life for us. And we pray in faith in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Mark Lee. Appreciate those kind words. So tonight's pledge allegiance will be led by Mayor Potemiao. You okay to fill in for Joe?
Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Johnson. Item number seven, additions and revisions. The council may only add an item to the agenda after making a finding that there is a need to take immediate action on the item and that the item came to the attention of the agency subsequent to the posting of the agenda. An action item, in action adding an item to the agenda requires a majority vote of the council. Marks, anybody from staff that looking to revise or add?
No, Mayor.
Councilmembers?
Mr. Mayor, if we can, can we have a, uh, portion of the City Manager's report, um, towards the beginning of the meeting, possibly, um, maybe even just right after this, right before presentations and announcements?
Councilmembers, you good with that? Yeah, I don't see why not. We need to make, we need to make a motion a second on that, correct? Or we can just go right through that?
Consensus is fine.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Councilmember. All right, with that being said then, if we wanna move to Brian Jones, if you wanna some, uh, have your report to us, it'd be perfect.
Sure, um. Since the end of December, we've been following the coronavirus, uh, from China across the Pacific Ocean. And, uh, we wanna make sure that we communicate to all of our residents and businesses and our employees that there's no higher priority for the City of Eastville team than the safety and health of our customers and our employees and, and our residents and businesses. Uh, many of you have questions about the, uh, novel coronavirus uh, and how it affects our local government agency and operations. Uh, to date, we are not aware of that there is any positive case of coronavirus in the City of Eastville. The entire San Bernardino County surrounds us on two sides, or the cities of Norco and Harupa Valley. I want to assure all of you that we are in constant communication with experts uh, working diligently behind the scenes to track, monitor, and evaluate preventative measures and draw, uh, and develop a continuation plan should this virus land in our community. We are getting regular updates on potential threat, potential threats. Since January, with the airplane, uh, was in quarantine at March Air Force Base, Riverside County was ground zero, um, and we have been receiving updates and participating in conversations with public health leaders and taking guidance from the Califor- uh, California State Department of Public Health and the Center, Center for Disease Control and Prevention. We have also been coordinating and receiving updates more regionally with Riverside County Emergency Management Department and the Corona Norco Unified School District. Last night, or on Monday night, I met with city managers throughout the county to better understand what many of them are con- them are considering and doing in preparation. Most are continuing operations with heightened awareness to potential threats and practicing good hygiene. Today, we participated on a White House call, which had over five thousand participants, city leaders from across the nation, uh, and local experts. And we got information from the White House on what the White House is doing. Um, and, um, you know, wi- with that, um, the President Trump declared a public health emergency in the United States in response to the coronavirus. Uh, government is taking a whole government approach to the coronavirus outbreak. Um, the CDC website is a great place for the most up-to-date and accurate information on the coronavirus. So please be careful of what you read on social media because, uh, if it's not coming from the CDC, it could not be, it might, it may not be accurate information. The following steps are encouraged to help mitigate and fur- the further spread of the virus, hand hygiene, social distancing, and if you develop symptoms, self-isolate and stay home. And they also wanted to reiterate, um, that, the, um, let's see, where did it say that? Uh, I can't find it. Um, but, uh, we are cleaning our city hall, uh, um, more frequently with higher, uh, quality materials. Um, and we have put up posters in our bathrooms about how to wash your hands, uh, and, and, uh, more thoroughly. How, and we have, um, the, um, disinfectant, um, that we are using that, that, and as you walked in, um, and as you walk out, we encourage you, um, to do that. Um, uh, to keep your cleanliness and, and the average American touches their face ninety times a day. And, and it was funny when they said, stop touching your face, and the, and the media people were all touching their face. Uh, um, so, um, subconsciously. So, um, we do it more often than we, we think, but, uh, that, when you touch your hands, um, two things, um, stay home when you're sick, wash your hands frequently, use verbal salutations in place of handshaking. Uh, cover your cough or sneeze with a tissue, avoid touching your face, eyes, nose, and mouth. Uh, um, and the California Department of Public Health recommends getting the flu vaccine if you have not done so this season. Uh, um, uh, we do not have any plans at this time to close our doors to the public or stop providing services to the public. We, we will have all hands on deck to provide services to the residents and businesses. This is also a fluid thing a- and this could change at a moment's notice depending on what our regional health leaders and experts are telling us to do. Um, please also remember, a local government employee, we serve our community and are all designated as res- emergency responders. And I think that's an important thing that all of our employees take very seriously. We will all show up at an emergency. Um, a- our first responsibility to the public is to provide services to maintain the health and welfare within our community. However, should the spread occur within Eastville, this approach may change, and each of you will be notified promptly of next steps, our role as employees, uh, a- and the specific, specific plans at that time. Um, we are developing a process and procedures with our local fire department a- 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 as well as our Riverside Sheriff's Office and the County Emergency Management Department. So we just wanna share that we are following this. We are monitoring it. We are evaluating it, and we are participating in every call that we can, uh, and we are getting regular u- updates uh, from our Emergency Management Department and our health officials on what we should be doing or, or considering. So, um, we, we don't wanna live in a place of fear, um, um, so we wanna be careful with that, causing a, a, a panic. Uh, um, yeah, but we also wanna be very vigilant a- and have awareness of our surroundings. So.
Thank you, Brian, for that detailed report. On that, is there any, uh, questions or comments? So then, none, we will move to item eight point one. Uh, this is the, uh, recognition of our Community Enhancement and Safety Officer, Jared Perez, uh, for achieving his cert- uh, Certified Code Enforcement Officer designation, the C C E O. So, Mr. Perez, would you like to come up to the podium and our council can, uh, join us down there with Jared? All right, Jared, I'll read this and we'll kinda have some comments for you. The City Council would like to recognize our Code Enforcement Officer, Jared Perez, on obtaining his Certified Code Enforcement Officer designation awarded by the California Association of Code Enforcement Officers. The California Association of Code Enforcement Officers grants the Certified Code Enforcement Officer designation only to those officers who complete demanding education requirements and who have a record of significant contributions to their local government and community. Obtaining the designation proves that he has completed all necessary requirements and has exhibited exemplary knowledge and dedication to the profession. I present the certificate to you on behalf of the city, and we congratulate you on your accomplishments and wish you much continued success with the City of Eastville. One other, one other comment, this kinda goes for the entire, it goes for Jared alone, but also for the entire, um, uh, Community Enhancement and Safety Team, is this is one area where as a city, we've really, really have strived hard to improve, be very proactive. And so along with Jared and his team of colleagues who have here supporting him tonight as well, which I think that's awesome to see that, uh, you know, they, they've done an excellent job in being proactive and doing proactive sweeps and doing a lot of things. And, and we're really, you know, one of the things I've been able to see, and I think some of our councilors have seen, is that usually we would get like complaints and to be honest, there's been very few, so I'm not trying to knock on wood here, but we've actually had, and I, and I mean this, we actually have had people come out of their way to, um, email how good their experience has been. Whether, e- even if that was an issue that was resolved or wasn't, but the communication was born on the best of the communication they've had when they've had an incident. So I think it's people like you, Jared, that are, are part of that and making that happen, and your team as well. So, thank you. You good?
Okay, okay, okay.
Awesome. Congratulations. You got just a presentation on Jason, can you say? Item eight point two, I'll just do it from here. We'll be introducing our new planning commissioner, oh, sorry, planning manager, Jason Kilabru. Jason, come on up.
It's with great pleasure that the City of Eastville is pleased to welcome our new planning manager, Jason Kilabru. Jason was born in Los Angeles, raised all his life in Pasadena, California. Jason attended California State University Fullertoning and immediately started his career in planning following graduation. Since then, Jason has worked for a handful of local Southern California cities, and most recently as a principal planner for the County of Riverside. Jason married the love of his life, Hilda Kilabru, in 2015 and moved to the Emlyn Empire. In 2016, Jason and Hilda have two daughters, Hayden, born in 2017, and Harper, born last Christmas. In 2019, the Kilabru family also includes two boxer dogs, Ruffo and Hook? Rufio and Hook. Jason spends most of his free time with his family, traveling and going on adventures. Jason is a devout Laker fan, but I heard the season just got canceled. And enjoys playing basketball and golf when he gets a chance. Welcome to the team, Jason. I received three or four unsolicited, congratulations. And how did you get Jason to come over to the City of Eastville when they found out within a few hours of him signing?
We're glad to have you on the team, for sure, Jason. Alright, we'll move to item number nine, public comments. Any member of the public may address the council on items within the council's subject-matter jurisdiction, but which are not listed on this agenda during public comments. However, no action may be taken on matters that are not part of the opposed agenda. We request, we request comments made on the agenda be made at the time the item is considered, and that comments be limited to three minutes per person. Please address your comments to the council as a whole, and do not engage in dialogue with individual council members, city staff, or members of the audience. Marcus, there be any public comments?
Yes, Mayor, we have five comment cards. The first one is Delois Ascot.
Good afternoon, thank you for allowing me this time to speak. I'm here because I live in the City of Eastville. I've been a homeowner since 2008, and I pay nearly thirteen thousand dollars a year in property taxes. The issue that I see in my neighborhood and in the surrounding neighborhoods is with street parking. It is a challenge to have a guest to come to my home and find a place to park in front of my door. It is a challenge for me to put my trash cans out on Wednesday nights because there's someone always parked there. Now, the issue is not just in my neighborhood, it's also in surrounding neighborhoods. So, I'm here because I'm trying to figure out if there's a way to get permit parking for this area. If there's not a way to get permit parking, is there a way to have some type of restricted parking, like they do in Arcadia, where you can't park on the street after a certain time? But it's a chronic issue, and something needs to be done about it. And in my neighborhood, I see renters primarily, or homeowners who are renting out their rooms, and they may have seven to eight cars per home. I'm a three-car family, have two minor children who are driving right now. And where I live, we keep our cars in the garage, one in the driveway. The neighbors have gotten so bad with the parking over there, that oftentimes, their car is hanging out in my driveway, or they're blocking their own driveway because there's not enough parking on the street. So, what can be done about that?
Is that, you asking a question?
I'm asking a question.
We're not allowed, we're not allowed to dialogue, so I apologize.
Alright, well, that's something that, you know, I would like an answer to at some point. So, that's why I'm here, to put that on maybe future agendas?
If I may, I did have one question for you to help us narrow it down. I don't know if you indicated where exactly you live, what neighborhood.
I live in Park, is it Parkview? Parkside, Parkside. I'm right off of Harrison, in Sand Dunes.
Okay. We have your contact information, also here, and somebody from city staff will probably likely be in touch with you.
That would be wonderful, thank you.
Also too, Brian, I know Johnny's back there, but if there's a way we can connect Johnny. I thought he was back, maybe back in the hallway back there, but if we can connect, Jason, if you see Johnny, maybe we can connect, is it Delois? If we can connect Delois and Johnny, that would probably be the best approach.
Sure, if we can get your address and work with Johnny, then we'll follow up with you.
And Johnny's our-
He'll be, he's right around the corner.
And Johnny's our Community Enhancement and Safety Manager. Thank you, Delois.
Next speaker is Thomas Rife.
Good evening, Mayor Pla, council and staff. My name is Thomas Rife, I'm a life scout with Eastville Troop Two Fifty-One, and I'm also the founder of the Eastville Service Club. I'd just like to let everyone know that our next Service Club Street Cleanup will be on March twenty-first. We'll be meeting at the entrance to Riverwalk Park at Chandler and Harrison, and we'll be cleaning up Chandler and Harrison from Harrison to Archbald, and we provide bags and gloves for everyone who chooses to volunteer. At our last cleanup, we actually had close to sixty members. People show up, and it was a lot of fun and interesting to see all the people come out and pick up trash together. I would like to encourage everyone that has time to come out and join us. We have a Facebook page with information about our club and cleanups that you can check, that you can look at and find out more about what we do. Thank you very much.
Awesome, thank you. We appreciate all that you do to all the cleanup services, and I think, I think every councilor has gone on it with you as well. And they're just extremely proactive, we appreciate you, what you do for the community, cleaning up various street projects, so thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Wyatt Johnson.
Yeah, it's fine.
Would you mind, so we know that we can combine the comment cards, that you have all three names in one?
Madeline, Cory, and Wyatt?
Perfect, thank you.
Alright, good evening, Mayor and fellow councilmen, fellow councilmen, councilmen and women. My name is Cory Heath, I'm an Eagle Scout at Troop Two Fifty-One, and my fellow scouts and I are here to share some information about, one, the National Boy Scouts filing for bankruptcy, and what this means for our local troops. And two, we're also going to be sharing some activities that our troop has coming up and what scouting means to us. I'll start by addressing the elephant in the room. Many of you have heard that BSA has filed Chapter Eleven bankruptcy in order to pay out settlements. But this restructuring at a national level won't affect our local councils and troops. Our districts have our own money and are legally separate organizations, so our local troops will carry out business as usual. I'll let others talk about what Two Fifty-One is currently doing, but first I'll talk about my experience in scouting. Scouting has been amazing for me. I started at Cub Scout Pack Eight Oh Three in first grade, and earned my ranks from Bobcat to my Arrow of Light. I then bridged into Scouts in fifth grade and earned my ranks there up to Eagle Scout, including two Palms. Scouting has given me more opportunities than I would have ever thought. My first merit badge was aviation, where at twelve years old, I learned how to fly a plane. A couple years ago, I built my own kayak out of plywood and paddled fifty miles down the Colorado River over the course of several days. And now I'm preparing for college and experiencing how big a deal Boy Scouts and achieving Eagle Scout is. Having Eagle Scout at the top of my resume qualifies me for various scholarships, and it gives me an advantage over other applicants. I attribute my work ethic to scouting, and being in the program for so long has taught me the value of hard work and determination. About six percent of scouts earn this rank, and less than one percent of those people earn a Palm. I'm proud to be a part of those statistics, and I could talk forever about what I've done, but I'll pass it off to Wyatt to talk about what Two Fifty-One is currently doing.
My name is Wyatt Johnson, and Eastville Troop Two Fifty-One has given me a lot of leadership experience from leadership camps such as the National Youth Leadership Training and Cedar Badge. We go out and learn new skills that are not only beneficial to specific scouting events, but also let us benefit others in the real world. One of the key concepts of teaching others in scouting is the Edge Method, which is educating, demonstrating, guiding, and enabling, which is really similar to our current education system, where they teach us, then they have us do it on our own, and then we get tested on it. And it allows us to progress further. So, in scouting, we have requirements that we sign off to move up in ranks. These different objectives that we meet also teach us things about hard work, leadership, and teamwork. So, at our latest campout, we went to the Painted Canyons, which is about two and a half hours from here, and we climbed ropes. And a lot of scouts didn't believe they could do it because we had to climb up like twenty-five feet of just a solid rock face. So, they managed to do it due to the cheering on of other scouts and the older scouts pulling them up. And they're able to feel really accomplished over accomplishing some of their fears and being able to physically do it, so thank you.
Good evening, my name is Madeline Johnson, I'm a starting scout with Troop Two Fifty-One G. Being a founding member of our group, girl troop, has been a fulfilling journey with many benefits this past year. When I first started, there were many skills I needed to learn in order to rank up. The boys in our brother troop were supportive as I worked to learn the different ways to build a fire, shape tinder from a piece of wood, and use lasagna to help make a two-story fortress at summer camp. Summer Camp at Fiesta Island was memorable because our troop was small, but represented ourselves well and earned a gold ribbon. We also participated in the Dutch Oven Cook-Off and the Rangada Regatta. While at camp, I learned how to kayak, paddleboard, and operate a motorboat. We had a night kayak trip, bonfire fires, paddled a dragon boat. We did a mile swim in the ocean, skit night, wifey night, and a chance for arts and crafts. At camp, every moment was filled with something to do. I also had opportunity to grow as a leader. As our troop's first senior patrol leader, planning every meeting was my responsibility. BSA encourages troops to be scout-led, not adult-led, which gives all scouts the chance to grow in their own leadership skills and confidence. BSA also provides training to young leaders. I will be attending a two-day leadership training in May and a week-long training while camping in the mountains in June. Camping with scouts has been very fun and enjoyable. We camp every single month and try to go somewhere new every time. While camping this first year as a scout, I crawled through lava tubes at Pisgah Crater, hiked five miles at Jackson Lake, used ropes to climb Canyon Wolves and explore caves at Rupenlado Canyon. I went on a night hike at Calco and learned some history while exploring the town. And soon I will be able to go on a fifty-mile kayak trip down the Colorado River. Overall, this past year in scouting has been a good experience, and you get to camp with your friends, you get to go on adventures, and it builds strong friendships. I would encourage anyone who may want memories of friendships like this to visit us and consider joining our troop. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for all your comments, we appreciate that, and thank you for sharing all that you guys do, appreciate it.
No more comment cards.
That was the last one? Alright, we will now move to item number ten, the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and are to be approved with one motion unless a council member, staff member, or a member of the public requests separate action on a specific item. Marcus, anybody that's been requested to pull any items?
No, Mayor.
Council members? Seeing none, so much more second.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Yau?
Yes.
Mayor Pott?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you, we'll now move to item number twelve point one, the Western Community Energy, known as WCE, launch presentation. And this will be presented by, well, it was presented by Mark, but I think also Tyler Masters will be, or you're going to introduce Tyler Masters, I already skipped the head on it, sorry. Just reading the notes and then really jumped again.
Tyler Masters is here from WRCO.
Sorry to throw your thunder there, I apologize.
Thank you for the introduction, can I pass these to you as well? Good evening, thank you Mayor Pla, and thank you Eastville City Council members. My name's Tyler Masters, I'm the Program Manager at Western Community Energy. Wanted to appreciate you guys for having me down. You're probably tired of seeing my face and presenting on CCAs or WCE, I think this is the fourth or fifth time now in the last year that we've been out, so thank you for inviting me to come back and to provide an update. This update, where I'm very excited to be able to provide, this is the launch of WCE. So, we are going to be launching in April and May of 2020. I'll go into what that means for us and for the City of Eastville and its residents. But first, I would like to kind of just step back a minute and just give everyone kind of a context on what WCE is, how it came to be, how it was created. Enabled by state law, state law allows cities and counties to come together to purchase electricity on behalf of their residents and their businesses, their community members. In our case, to providing that discount, that discount that they're able to purchase electricity at, share that discount with the community members. Now, the cities that have come together and created WCE are listed here on the slides. Eastvale, first and foremost, always, Canyon Lake, Hemet, Harupa Valley, Norco, Paris, and Wildamar. Those are, those are the cities that came together to create Western Community Energy. Our Board of Directors is made up of one elected official from each of these cities. Thank you Director Rigby for being on our Board of Directors for WCE, and City Manager Brian Jones for taking a leadership role in our Technical Advisory Committee as well. So, that is Western Community Energy, but again, what we do, what Western Community Energy does might make a little bit more sense if I go through the context of the current system. Southern California Edison does three things for us. They purchase the electricity, and then they deliver the electricity through their wires, their infrastructure, to you, the customer. What Western Community Energy will be doing in May for the City of Eastville is we're going to be purchasing the electricity at a discounted rate. We're going to still be partnering with Southern California Edison because they are a big partner, partnering with Southern California Edison because the infrastructure, the wires, the transmission lines, all of that, the hard items are still Southern California Edison's, we're partnering with them to get it to our customers, to your residents, your businesses. What WCE does, I think is the first question, like, why, why do it? What are we looking at for businesses and citizens here? First and foremost is choice, providing a choice where choice hasn't been provided before. Since 2018, the City of Eastville and the other cities that I mentioned earlier took the, took the action to move forward with creating Western Community Energy, which gives your residents now the choice on where they get their electricity and how much they pay for that electricity. So, local choice is a big, a big item for programs like this. Local control is another big one. Now, the cities that created Western Community Energy have control over the electricity rates. They have the power and authority to adopt and elect our electricity rates. Also, in the future, if there's any energy programs that we're able to provide for our localities, more local control over the development and implementation of those energy rates. Those are some, a pretty big deal, those can create favorable economic development opportunities for our subregion. But first, you know, a big thing of it for our Board of Directors was utility bill savings. Coming out of the gate and sustaining a discounted rate on electricity that we can provide to our, to our customers, your constituents. I also want to mention that these energy programs like this, this isn't the first of its kind, we're not, we're not creating a wheel over here. These energy programs like this have a pretty strong, hugely strong track record of success. There are twenty-four operating programs like this across the entire state that account for about a hundred and seventy different jurisdictions. To our, to our knowledge, not one has joined an energy program and then opted out. Because the Board of Directors, all of these energy programs have met the direction of their Board of Directors, whether it is purchasing cleaner electricity, whether it's purchasing cheaper electricity and sharing that with the residents. So, that kind of goes into our program goals, our Board of Directors, early on, wanted us to offer our default electricity rate that matched Southern California Edison's. What we were able to do is provide that default rate a little bit, a little bit cheaper, two percent. Our electricity will result in a reduction on your residents, your community members' bills by two percent. So, your bill is going to reduce by two percent by purchasing WCE. The first choice, the Choice Plan, is that that default rate, thirty-seven percent of the electricity we're purchasing is coming from a clean renewable source, wind, solar, et cetera, compared to Edison's thirty-five percent. So, a little bit cleaner, a little bit cheaper. For those folks that have a green thumb and want to know that, you know, more of their electricity comes from a green source, we have a rate called Choice Plus Plan, folks can opt up to that plan, they pay a little bit of a premium. It's not something we're really pushing, but it is an option for those folks out there. And a hundred percent of that electricity comes from a green source, wind, solar, et cetera. Um, out there and a hundred percent of that electricity comes from a green source, wind, solar, et cetera. Um, we are slated to launch, as I had mentioned, in April and May. Uh, the the cities of Norco, Paris and Wildamar, your neighbors uh here, um, will be launching next month in April. Of twenty twenty this year, Eastvale, Hemet and Harupa Valley will be launching in uh May. I do also want to mention that this is, uh, you know, I know this is right around the corner, but we've implemented a a pretty robust. Outreach campaign, I'd say, the last couple of years. We've WR cog staff, myself. Uh, and one of uh my team members has been out to, you know, nearly thirty community events in the region. A a large portion of those in, you know, the Eastvale, Harupa Valley, Norco uh area. We've done a number of of board. Community presentations, again, fifth city council presentation, we provided this too, so. Uh, we've, and also we've been on social media, providing. I'm not a social media guy, but we've been boosting and paying for ads and all that, all that fun stuff. So we've been getting out there. Uh, in front of uh our, some of, some of our uh computers there. So I do want to mention, uh, as part of the outreach campaign, and actually this is required by law. Uh, we are sending out pre-enrollment notifications. So that is what I've shared with you. We've also uh put some up at the, by by the front counter. Um, state law, we have to provide two enrollment notifications, uh, two months prior to launch and two months after launch. We have uh delivered that to the mail this week. Uh, so residents and businesses will start seeing this mailer again at the, it's at the front counter. You can grab one. Uh, starting this week and it has a little bit of information on uh what WCE is. If you want to opt out, how to do that. It has our call center information, has website information, all of that stuff. Uh, so it's a a resource on on how to get additional information. Uh, I do want to caveat that, um, as we've now done this with a couple of cities, there's, there's one customer class that. May or may not be receiving this at this time, and that's solar customers. So fourteen percent of our customer base has solar, their net energy metering rates, uh, customers, NEM rates for short. Uh, where those folks will phase in on a quarterly basis, close to their true-up. If I have solar. Uh, I true, you know, I would, I don't, uh, but if I did, you true up with Southern California Edison once a year. At that, at the end of that year, you you find out if you get a credit or you pay a little bit more. Um, we're aligning the solar customers enrollment with that true-up to cause uh less confusion. So that's the one caveat I'd like to. Like to mention if you get folks that are saying, I didn't get this bill, it's likely they're a solar customer and their true-up is October or next January. Um, so I won't get into the details of this, but this is our, this is, these are our adopted rates. This is how we come up with our rates. We take uh Edison's generation rate, we apply a discount, we remove. The Edison surcharges to come up with our SCE generation rate on the side. Uh, then to compare apples and apples, we add back in Southern California Edison's uh surcharges. Uh, what this means for your bill, uh, so this is the domestic rate, uh, what you would have at home. The average user in in August or or September uses about a thousand kilowatt hours a month. What this means, this portion of the bill. Is a little under ninety-three dollars a month. Um, what what uh that rate would look like under WCE is a little under eighty-eight bucks, so. You know, it's, it's four, five dollars a month. Uh, it's, it's not a lot. That's what the two percent savings looks like. But on a regional level, we're looking at six and a half million dollars that's being reinjected into our local economy. So on a regional basis, it's pretty big. Also, you know, I'd, I'd love to find five bucks in my, my couch uh every month. That'd be pretty, pretty neat. I'd feel like a. I'd feel like a king, but. Um, what this really looks like, once we start explaining some of that stuff, um. Folks are curious what what it looks like on my bill. Okay, alright Tyler, am I gonna need to then? Uh, create an account, do my auto pay, what's my billing system gonna look like? Edison will still, uh, still manages the bill. So the Edison, the Edison, Southern California Edison still provides your bill. Nothing changes. There's no need to reapply. There's no need to set up another account. Uh, right now, your Edison bill is already made up of two parts, the generation piece, which is the cost of electricity. And the delivery piece, which is what they, what they charge to deliver that electricity through the, again, through their wires, their infrastructure to the customer. We're just absorbing the electricity cost piece. Um, and that's uh indicated at the the two and three there on uh that line item. We'll. We'll absorb that. It'll say Edison and then uh the next month it'll say WCE and that will be a a the the lower rate that I mentioned earlier. Um, some of the resources that we have available also. Cause we brought on a team, uh, we have a professionally staffed uh call center. Um, that call center is open from from Monday through Friday, seven AM to seven PM. If you call after hours, there's inter- interactive voice recording. It's one of those, you know, if I question on my bill, press one. If you want to opt up, press two, opt out, press three, those type of things. If you don't want to go through that, you can leave a message. We'll call you back the next business day. Um, our, uh, our call center is eight six six three five six four one seven five. It's on all of our outreach materials. It's on our website. At westerncommunityenergy.com as well, or if you're, uh, if you wanted to shoot us an email, customerservice@westerncommunityenergy.com. Um, one thing, actually, I want to go back. One thing I want to mention about the call center, uh, it, all of our call center staff are, uh. Most of them are fluent in English and Spanish. We also have translating opportunities for folks uh that speak Mandarin. We understand that some of our cities have that need. So if you call and you need uh to speak Mandarin, we can bring in a translator and get. Uh, get the, get the questions answered, uh, get your questions answered as well, so. There's that opportunity. Uh, again, westerncommunityenergy.com for more information. We have some frequently asked questions, staff. Former and and current uh staff, um, on the bottom left there, I like the. Uh, W WCE staff favorite is what happens if my power goes out. So everyone should definitely check out that frequently asked question. Um, also, we have a WCE pop-up kiosk. If you haven't seen it, it's in, at City Hall. It has a lot of the, the. The top frequently asked questions that I'll go through here in uh my presentation, uh, but also directs uh folks to. Again, the website, the call center, all of the resources. We want to guide folks to to get the, their questions answered as. As as thoroughly and and efficiently as possible. So, uh, I want to mention again that we've been out to a number of community events. We've, we've talked to a lot of your community members. Um, we've been out to six, seven community events, National Night Out, a lot of some of the JCSD events, some of the. City of Eastvale events, they've all been great. We get a lot of the similar questions. Uh, first is, okay, well, it sounds great, but do I have to participate? The answer is no. Uh, customers can opt out at any time via our call center. You can uh opt out on on the website. All they need is their. SCE account number, last name, zip code, and you can opt out. It's, it's very easy. Uh, you don't need to set up a new account. You don't need to do all of this other stuff, so you can opt out at any time. Uh, the number one question we get though is, if I have solar, can I participate? Uh, and the answer is yes. Uh, while you will phase in in quarters, a little bit different than uh mass and the the other enrollments in May and. In May and April, uh, the solar customers will um enroll quarterly, April, July, October and January. Closer to their annual true-ups, again, to avoid confusion. Uh, but one of the, two of the things, uh, that reasons that that solar folks can participate at a greater value, if you are a solar customer and you produce more electricity. Than you consume, WC will actually pay you out at a greater rate than Southern California Edison. So if you, again, have produced more electricity than you consume, we'll pay you out a little under seven cents a kilowatt hour. Compared to uh Edison's last six months, uh, their, their rate the last six months is ranged between three and a half cents and five. Again, compared to seven. And if you don't produce more than you consume, you still will be able to participate in the same discounted rate that I mentioned earlier. On the other side of the coin, what if I already participate in other, in other Edison, great Edison programs, there are a number out there. Care and Farrah for the income-qualified households, uh, fixed income households, medical baseline program for folks that have. Uh, electric medical equipment that they need to keep on at all times, uh, level pay programs, summer discount programs. All of these are statewide programs and will carry over, uh, participating in WC. All of those will carry over. Without needing to reapply in the program, without needing to set anything up. So it'll be pretty, pretty, pretty seamless. Um, this was a boogeyman for a little bit. If I stay with Edison, am I gonna be subsidizing WCE customers? The thought behind this is at, Southern California Edison purchases electricity on a long, on a long term for all customers. Some customers are leaving to go to WCE, Edison is left with the electricity that they're purchasing on your behalf. Uh, these are included in things called uh exit, the exit fees or PCIA Power Charge Indifference Adjustment. We know them uh better as exit fees. Uh, these exit fees have been included in WCE rates and we're still. Seeing the two percent savings uh reduction in in the utility bill. So we've included in, we've included it in our rates. And um, we're still, we're still able to to move forward and and provide the savings. Um, we can get more information on westerncommunityenergy.com. We are on social medias, uh, we will. We've implemented a social media response campaign. This week, we're going back through the last six months, last couple of months, I should say, uh, of. There's a lot of questions and and comments out there. We're responding to those, uh, so that we're. Um, so that we're providing the information, guiding folks to the resources that they need. Uh, we have our website, uh, for more information. We have info at wrcog.us as well. Uh, here's our contacts, uh, call center, our, our four staff, we're lean and mean, uh, but we're here to answer any and all of your questions. Uh, that concludes my presentation and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tyler, for that presentation. We appreciate that. Just look to my colleagues if there's any comments before I reach out to the public. Councilmember Lorimer?
Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it. Um, you, you had mentioned solar and, um, for people that. Stay with WCE moving forward and that they decide to convert to solar. I know that, um, I I read a while back about Edison charging a fee to connect to the electrical grid. Um, if they have solar, um. What would that mean for WCE? Who would be, would any, would that fee be collected through WCE? Would it still go through SCE? Um. Yeah, I, I don't know if you've thought about that.
Thank you for the question. Uh, yes, so the interconnection fee, that's on the delivery side of everything, the transmission. So the connection with. With your house, your solar system to, you know, the quote-unquote grid, Edison's grid, that will still remain Edison. So the interconnection portion. If you get solar, will still be Edison, but you'll be a WCE customer and benefiting from our rates.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Yau?
Thank you for the presentation. Um, that was really helpful. And with that being said, you know, with with all due respect, I, I do think that there needs to be a little bit more outreach, um, specifically. In Mandarin. I, I looked through your entire website, your, your brochure, nothing in there. Um, has Mandarin in it and I, we have a huge, um, Mandarin-speaking population here in Eastvale, unlike. Other cities, um, that in the Northern Empire or that you're serving, um. I think you need to do a little bit more than just bringing in a translator every time someone calls, because you might have to bring him or her in like full-time. Um, but I, maybe we can work together or something, but we, we do have, um. Maybe we can, Brian, maybe we can connect him with Woody or something, but. Um, definitely, I, I would love to see a little bit more outreach.
Okay. Um, we are uh going to be updating our website to provide a little bit more Ma- Mandarin. There's, uh, the terms and conditions on. Uh, the enrollment notification will be, that will be in Mandarin as well. That'll be added to the website if it hasn't been already. It will be uh this week.
Councilmember Lorimer, or sorry, Councilmember, sorry, Councilmember Rigby. I went through the whole entire council party. Yes, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um. That was a concern that we brought up. Uh, Mayor Protem was, uh, the Mandarin aspect and I know that staff has been working on that and and helping that to. Um, be a little bit more accessible. Um, it, it's hard when you implement a program that's over a region. And the other areas in the region are not as heavily populated as we are with Mandarin speakers, so. Um, that's one of the things that I, I asked staff if we could work on a little bit. So staff is working on that, so I appreciate that. Um, Tyler, at the beginning of your presentation, I hope that this is the same presentation you give to all cities. Because you have Eastville at the top and you said that first and foremost, Eastville, so I hope it's the same presentation you give to all cities. Okay, thank you.
Um. Eastville's always at the top on that, on that list.
Nice, nice. Good, good to know. So.
On every list, on every list.
Just a couple of things that I just want to go over, um, uh. You touched upon the most common questions that we have and just want to reiterate that. If you have questions regarding this program, regarding this, uh, please reach out. Um, there's a lot of great resources that WR cog has assisted with WCE and making sure that all those questions are asked or are answered. Um, two percent is the estimated savings right now. And that's a conservative number that we as a, as a board has, um, tasked our staff with, is to make sure that we achieve that. And as a reminder, that two percent is over your total bill. We're only responsible, WCE is only responsible for the generation charge, which the generation savings is gonna be higher than that two percent. Um, and then again, two percent sounds like, oh, it's only five bucks on my bill. But when we think about an entire region and we think about that, even if it's a dollar, with that dollar, how that can be reinvested back into our region, it adds up. And it ends up being a lot of money that can be, um, turned over and reinvested back into our region. So yes, it's only two percent. Um, depending on, i- is, you're probably well aware, you just got a recent notice from SCE that they are raising their rates. Um, so we're anticipating that there's. Uh, hopeful, an opportunity that we'll be able to save even more than the two percent that we're at right now. Um, regarding the outreach, I know that's been a concern in our city specifically, the outreach that has been done. Um, as Tyler briefly touched upon, thank you for being at all the events that you guys have been at. I know you've been at Picnic in the Park and had a booth there. You've been at Fall Festival, had a booth there. I know that you had a, uh. Banner up at Gerada Park for the baseball, so sponsorships through our, our youth sports programs. Um, we had a, uh, advertisement on the electronic billboard on the fifteen freeway. We had, if. For those of you that have been to the movie theaters over the last year, you saw an ad from WCE there. Um, so there's been a lot of outreach that has been done, as well as Tyler coming multiple times to our city council meetings. Um. Excuse me, as well as his willingness and his staff's willingness to be accessible. And I know that that will continue. So thank you for the outreach that you have done, um, and continue to do. One of the questions, a couple more questions that that I've seen, um. As a customer transitions to WCE, is there any risk that they take on, um. With going over from SCE, because I, I think it's a fear too that some people may have, that WCE is this new entity. Um, and and switching over from my current electricity provider to now WCE, is there any risk? That a customer may incur with that?
Um, not currently. Right now, we have, we, we know our rates, uh, where our rates are, you know, four per, as, as you mentioned, they're four percent lower on generation, two percent. Which result in a two percent lower bill. Um, so a, a resident coming over to WC will realize that savings. Uh, right away, and if they don't, if if they still decide they don't want to participate in WCE. Uh, they can opt back to Southern California Edison with, with no charge. If they opt out a number of months later, Edison does have the authority to charge, um, the customer. Uh, Edison, uh, WCE itself is not going to charge for opting out or anything like that. We just realized, we just, um. Recently, we're informed that that uh fee that Edison could charge is like fifty cents of an account, which is very small. Um, but no, there's, there's, there's no, there's no risk.
Thank you. The last question that I have is, is the board is made up of elected officials. From the participating cities, as well as the TAC Advisory Committee is made up from, uh, primarily the city managers from those corresponding cities. With it being made up from the cities, I know sometimes it can be a concern from, uh, from residents. Of why is that happening and what is the city benefiting from this? I think sometimes people are like, oh, the city's doing this. To try and get an additional revenue source. They're making money off of this. Um, can you touch upon that, how that works and how the city's involvement is in that?
Yeah, that's a, the great question and we've received it now that, uh, some cities have received the mailers. Uh, so the question is, is there, is there any sort of, uh, you know, any, any re-investment in a general fund for the city? Um, so, no, uh, the, all, there, there's been no financial contributions to. Or from the city at this point. There's been no, uh, all of the upfront costs for implementation. The city has paid nothing into that. That's, uh. That's all been something that WR cog has handled. Um, there's no reinvestment into general funds for any of the cities. These are ratepayer dollars. So all, any, any, any revenues uh that come in go back to the ratepayers in the form of. Discounts on, discounts on the, the rates, electricity rates, developing localized energy programs, things like that. So. So it stays, it stays local at the, at the customer level.
Thank you for that. It's, I think it's very important for us to, to know and realize that the city is not benefiting, benefiting. is not benefiting, benefiting financially from this, other than being a customer. Um, i- in benefiting as any other customer would be. Just to kind of reiterate what Tyler said regarding that, from a board standpoint, we are looking to, um, return then the money that we get from WCE to the customer in a variety of ways. Um, if that be a rate decrease or if that be additional programs that we can offer, um, different rebates that are, that are out there. Um, so it is something that those revenues are not given to the city. The city doesn't have any access to the revenues. Uh, the city doesn't receive any money from this program or from this entity. Uh, it's something that those, that money stays with WCE and is reinvested back into its customers. Once again, if it's a, if it's a lowered rate, if it's additional programs that we can do. Um, right now, the board's priority is to continue to look for opportunities to lower the rate. Um, and then to also get our reserves to where they're, they're, uh, um, required to be. Once the reserves are required or at the required amount, then we'll evaluate what programs we can continue or we can additionally offer to our customers. So, thank you again Tyler. Thanks for all you've done. You're, uh, a ton of knowledge on this and I appreciate you coming. I know that, uh, um, we've requested you be here a number of times, but we, we really appreciate you being here and sharing this information. Not to bombard Tyler with multiple contacts, but he is, he's the go-to with any questions about this. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to contact Tyler, contact customer service number and they'll get back to you. If they don't get back to you, um, sometimes it, like any other thing, it gets lost. I know that some people have said, oh, I've tried contacting WCE. If you can't get a hold of them, contact me and I'll make sure that there, there's a response given.
And that's my direct line on the, on the, on the slide there. Thank you.
Thank you Tyler. I have no questions. I mean, my councilors kind of hashed out most all the questions. With that being said, Mark, was there any public comment on this?
No, Mayor.
Okay. It seems like discussion may be done. Is there any further discussion on this? All right, seeing that there's no vote for this, it's just a receiving file. We will move to the next item, which is item 12.2, the approval of the Exela, I hope I said that right, Exela land management software contract, which will be presented by our very own Gina Williams Gibson.
Yes, good evening Mayor and members of the council and members of the public. Uh, actually, tonight for your consideration is, uh, the extension of the Exela management contract. So, uh, let me just walk you through what we're going to do. It's, I'm just going to give a brief overview and then we have our, um, account, our regional account executive and our, uh, sales director for this region as well that are here, flown out here, uh, specifically tonight to give a presentation to council. Uh, so briefly, the Exela system is how we track the land management in the community development department. Uh, the goal of that program is to be able to, uh, integrate all of the departments so that the business owners and the developers that are doing business in our city get a uniform answer and they get that answer very quickly and they get that answer, uh, to be very accurate. Uh, there are several, uh, benefits to that system and we've listed them on, in the agenda report. Basically, let me just, uh, say quickly, it's up to 50% reduction in permit turnaround time. There's automatic calculation of permit fees. We're going to be able to streamline the workflow, coordinate the review projects amongst all the different divisions. That's internal and external. Uh, we even have electronic plan review, uh, and there's also going to be, uh, deposit cost recovery. And what's also important is analytics. You've seen that with our community enhancement and safety team. We've been able to determine how many, uh, inspections are done and, and what the turnaround rate is. We're going to be able to do that for the planning, building and engineering divisions for the city and for the public. Also, new with this, uh, contract extension, we're, we're going to be expanding the program to allow the public portal. So not only will we be able to use it internally, but the residents and the business owners of the city of Eastville will be able to do so as well because they'll be able to click in online and check the status of their permit. So, uh, those are some exciting things, uh, essentially that we're asking for this evening. So right now I'll turn it over to, uh, the Exela team, have them do a brief presentation and then I'll take it back. If there's any questions that you have, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Um, thanks for your time today. We're excited to be here to, uh, just give you a brief overview of the Exela software. I know, um, there's some new faces on the staff, um, as well as the council. So this thing can be, uh, pretty high level, but hopefully it'll give you an, uh, understanding of some of the, uh, pieces that Gina shared around what the software can do, uh, for the city as well as citizens. We call our product the Civic Platform and, um, we've been around for over 20 years, focused specifically on software for government agencies, um, in the areas of permitting, licensing, uh, code enforcement as well. What the solution provides is, and a, uh, product that is configured to the needs of the city of Eastville specifically. Um, it allows for different cha- easy changes and, uh, different business rules that come with, you know, just normal changes within the city. Uh, different, um, code changes and things like that. We also have our mobile solutions for your inspectors, inspectors that are out in the field. Um, Gina mentioned the reporting and analytics. I'll touch a bit more on that as well, um, in a few later slides, but a really powerful piece of the overall software, um, as well as a citizen access portal. I have a few screenshots so I can show you what it'll actually, what it looks like at, um, another, um, county that we work with in, in, um, New Mexico. The built-in GIS capabilities, GIS is Geography Information Systems. That's the ability to layer over those address and parcel and owner information within the software to really give you that pinpoint accuracy, um, when you're, when you're doing some of your building and planning functionalities. Robust APIs, what that means is the ability to connect with other software solutions pretty seamlessly within, um, within the city. Some other benefits, we actually, our, our, our cloud software is hosted on the Microsoft Azure platform. So obviously Microsoft, a very large organization. Um, a lot of reliability, performance and, and, um, trust and security, um, stands behind their platform. Uh, Gina mentioned the cross-department collaboration, uh, very important to be able to communicate between departments, um, digitally. And then another, that bottom one there that, uh, has existing customers future-proofing. This is really focused on, um, the future enhancements and, uh, things that'll come with, with our software, um, as a long-term, um, government agency client. These are a few of the areas that we focus on. So you'll see the, um, the names across the top there, building communities, growing business and protecting citizens. Uh, these all are applications that live on the Civic Platform. So planning, building, licensing. Uh, you'll see cannabis regulation, short-term rentals. Those are new, um, new modules within our products. We're always expanding the, uh, solution for, you know, up and coming regulations that come within a city, county or state. And then I mentioned we're a cloud software. So that means that you pay a subscription model, very similar to a Netflix or, um, you know, any other monthly or annual type subscription model and you, you're able to access it, um, you know, through the cloud. Our support is fully included within the cost of the overall software. We do two large version upgrades every year and that's where we roll out different features and enhancements from feedback that we get from the government agencies that we work with. So, um, you know, in working with Eastville, if there's certain aspects of the product that may help them in the future, that's feedback we accept, bring it back to our team internally and they could potentially build it into a future version upgrade. So, a lot of fluidity and a lot of opportunity for the, uh, product to continue to do more for you all. So here's the first screenshot I wanted to show you of a citizen access portal. I just have a couple of screenshots here, but you can think of it similar to an Amazon-type shopping experience. You get to log in. You can go in, you can select the type of permit that you're looking to apply for, um, whatever that may be, your license, whatever, whatever you have this configured for and whatever the citizen or the contractor, the, the customer is looking to do. Um, they're able to go through pay online, um, go through a payment processing, uh, path online, again, similar to Amazon. And then this screen shows their ability to go log back in and check those permits, um, or, or schedule inspections and just understand the, uh, where it is in the overall process. So this reduces a lot of the phone calls and the walk-in and the, the time that's spent, uh, the staff has to spend of answering those types of requests and it allows the citizen to go and access it themselves, allows them to self-service themselves. Really powerful tool, um, and again, reduces all the time that the staff is maybe spending on that today and allows them to focus on other value-add activities. Here's an example of, uh, I mentioned that Geography Information System overlay. So this is an example of how that can overlay into the software and you're able to, uh, see some different reporting and, uh, dashboards based on that, um, data information that's connecting with Exela. And then a few other screenshots of just reports specifically. So this is one where, um, uh, the staff can actually go in and start to, they can create reports. So you'll see all those dropdown menus out there. They can create custom reports, um, based on, maybe there's something the council specifically would like to see. Maybe there's a certain staff department that has a request on a weekly basis, a monthly basis, whatever it may be, to be able to get some real detailed reporting. Um, where today it's a little bit more laborious to get that done. An example of that is, this is a planning application by month, uh, um, report. So this is something that, again, can be created, uh, however you want in terms of the different variables you want to report against. And then you can print this out and be shared or you can email it and however you want to distribute it amongst, um, you know, the extended team. Another example, this is, you'll see, um, this bar graph here. This is, um, where in the process, a certain number of days, a, uh, a permit application might be in a certain stage of a process. So this allows you to identify how long the overall process may take. It allows you to identify which area it may stay in for a certain period of time and really understand these, the bottlenecks that may come. Maybe it's, maybe it gets stuck in plan review for a certain period of time and then what can we do to, uh, speed up that stage? So this allows you to really take that next step and analyze that data that Exela provides. And overall, I just wanted to share a few other local agencies that we work with, uh, Europe Valley, right down the street here. Um, Inglewood, Lancaster, Rancho Cucamonga, who I know, um, Gina and her team have, have spoken with and, you know, learned some best practices as, as they've been, um, a client of ours for some time now. So, um, that's all I had to share today. Uh, it was brief. Hopefully, um, I was able to share some of the value that this software can bring to the city and, um, happy to answer any questions.
So Mayor and Council, what we're asking for tonight is to, uh, have this contract extended to a three-year term. We were able to negotiate, uh, it, we're going to expand it, uh, to, uh, have 30 licenses this time around because we want to be able to have all the departments talking to each other. Uh, and the other thing we were able to do in exchange for expanding it is we were able to reduce the contract, uh, amount from, uh, three, a five percent increase to a three percent increase for the next, uh, three years. And, uh, this is a continuing relationship with Exela, but it's just really key for the city to be able to provide excellence in their service model and then for the new land development, also for our Eastville 2040. These are things that will help us increase service and, uh, also increase the accuracy and then also be responsible in terms of transparency. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you Gina, appreciate that. Thank you also for the presentation. Uh, any comments, questions for, if we could go to a public comment from our council? Councilor Rigby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have a couple of questions, um, on this, looking at the staff report from, it looks like in, uh, let me find it, I'm sorry. In 2015 was when the contract was awarded and it was for 45,000. How many users was that for?
10.
For 10?
Yes.
Cause the staff report says that we were going from 20 to now 30.
I'm sorry, it was 20 initially, right. It was 20 initially. I'm looking down at the bottom here where it says we're increasing 10. So 20 originally.
From 20 to 30.
Yes, that is correct.
And we're doubling the cost. Is there anything different from what we were getting to what we're getting now?
So-
Other than the increase of 10 users?
Right, so we, yes, we are increasing the users, but we are also ex- expanding the system and then that, that one was just for the one year, if I'm not mistaken, the 45,000.
That was for three years.
I, I can, I can answer, yeah. So we have an annual 5% increase that Gina mentioned, um, that we've, we've been able to, uh, work with Eastville to bring down to a 3% increase. So from 15 to now 2020, that's probably where some of that increase was. And, um, uh, you know, a lot of that is just reinvesting back into the software, being able to do these bi-annual version upgrades that I mentioned where we can provide, you know, more features, more functionality to streamline these processes and just allow the software to be more powerful than it was five years ago. I mean, uh, there's certainly many more features and functionality in the software than there was in 2015. And that's part, uh, part of where the, um, that increase comes from.
And I, I would also mention that, uh, even though, uh, the city has already had their relationship with Exela since 2015, about a year ago, we actually did the work of doing the surveys of other land management system. There were a total of four that we researched and we, we did visit many cities, uh, like you said, Rancho Cucamonga was one of them. Reno Valley was another one of them, uh, several cities that did our, our research. And so we did find the price as seen in the agenda report today to be competitive. I would say that, uh, there are those that are far more expensive now, uh, to provide the same type of services. So, um, I would offer that as well.
My bad, I jumped in. It's relative to your question, cause I'm, so I just kind of need some clarification on some, on some, it would seem, and I'm sure there's an explanation for it. There's some discrepancy, again, it looks like a discrepancy, may not be, but there's a little chart, I think that Todd was looking at or Councilor Rigby was looking at. It says first year 87,967. Does that number kind of ring a bell?
Yeah, that like, that is probably the 30 licenses total, yeah.
Okay, but in your, in your contract we're looking, in the scope of work, it says 59,342 for the first year for 20 users in the first year. And it says 20 users, not 30 in the first 12 months. And that's from March 26, 2020 to March 25th, 2021. Is that-
Yeah, so I, I think it might be, um, the way, when we add users, we, we do it as a separate contract. So I believe it's, it's just a little bit below that. Um, there's an additional, uh, contract, the second piece to add those users. And then in years moving forward, we combine them. It's just the way our, our operations from the sales side.
So what is the first year's cost of 30 users? And we're not going 20 users, we're going 30.
It's that 87 total.
Because in the second year and the third year, it says 30 users and it's, it, that it's consistent with the rest of the chart. It's that first year, it's not consistent.
It is a bit confusing unfortunately, just the way, the way you're looking at it. Um, in year one, it's separated. In year two, it combines and so on.
So it's like an addendum to the agreement. I just, thank you for pulling that. And that's the 28,000 that adds up.
Yeah, we do it a little funky, uh.
No, I, I, I actually get the addendum part. That makes total sense and, yeah, that, that actually makes a lot of sense. So it will be 30 hours, or, sorry, 30, 30 hours, sorry, 30, uh, users for the first year. Okay, that kind of helps answer at least my question, that clarification.
I do have one, one more question on this, uh, and I know this is just minimal. But it does say that we'll have 58,000 users for the subscription, uh, for the citizen access. Um, where did we get that number from?
Yeah, so the way that's priced is based on the population. So that was likely, what the population was back when that contract was originally created. So it's like a, it's kind of swapped in terms of the way we, the way it's viewed on that. So that's a population number.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I mean, it's only, the citizen access is only a couple thousand dollars, but I just don't know, I mean, I don't think we need all those accesses or access.
It, it's just the way that we price it. Um, it's, it's just how-
Like I said, it's only 2,000 dollars out of the grand scheme of things.
Yeah, it's, it's how we model out the pricing just based on if, uh, it really is more, you know, how many hits are coming to a site potentially. So if the city was twice as large, we would, you know, want to charge a little bit more to manage it on our side.
Right, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilman Bellormore.
Thank you. Um, Gina, I had a couple of questions for you. So for, for this staff, uh, including the 10 new staff members, uh, that will be utilizing this, everybody is trained on this program or will be trained on this?
Yes, so everybody will be trained. It, it also, it includes, uh, fire, safety. So there's, there's, uh, different divisions that aren't included in the software today that we want to be able to expand it to have everybody speaking with, with, uh, everybody simultaneously so that we're able to review things quickly and not have anything stagnate. So yes, the answer is we, we will be increasing it and we also will be providing training as well.
Okay, and that's an area that we can help as well. A big part of my role is to just make sure that the city of Eastville is successful with, with having the software on board. So we can, we can provide some training, um, and we have an annual conference and we're able to have some of the folks, uh, here attend a few months back. So there's, there's ongoing, uh, development for the software as well.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Um, I, I also wanted to follow up. Um, for the different features associated, it seems like there is a lot that you can go into. I want to make sure that with these different features, staff is actually taking advantage of these as opposed to, because of lack of training, that, that, that's where the initial question came from.
I think that may have been a, something that occurred, uh, in the past, but we are definitely have a robust approach. Uh, I have experience with a land management system in, uh, prior work, uh, so does Jason Killabrew. Uh, so does, uh, Mr. Johnny Turfer as well. So we'll all be working in concert to ensure that, uh, we utilize the services to the full- So we'll all be working in concert to ensure that uh we utilize the services to the full, full of its capabilities.
Okay, excellent, thank you, I I did have a, a question for you as well, so I I appreciate that we have a three percent um as opposed to a five percent. This five percent that was in there, am I understanding correctly that, that is it just for one year, the three percent? Or is it three percent over each of the three years, or three percent for the first year and five percent thereafter?
Yeah, it's it's a year-over-year increase, um and it's three percent year-over-year as opposed to five percent year-over-year.
Okay, alright, um and then in the uh these things, with these continual percentage increases over time, it starts to turn into real money. Um do we have the ability, how transferable is this information uh between, if we decide to go a different direction in the future?
I mean, in terms of the, the data, you, you own it um at the end of a contract, if you were to, you know, move on, um obviously, we don't want that to happen, but um you certainly own the data. And um you know, it it is a heavy uh lift on, on the city's side to have to go re-implement a whole new solution, but you have, you know, the, the access to the data. And you're able to, you know, then implement that into something else if needed.
And we have that the data actually exists today, but it exists in a manual format, so we were, we're gonna have to transform that data uh to get it to Excela, to bring the system up to its full capabilities. So we will retain that, uh and we can also download that data into any format that you wish, and so uh data retention is important, but it is uh in order to switch from one system to another, it is, it is quite expensive, several hundred thousand dollars.
Okay, I I appreciate that, and as we move forward, if uh we could keep towards the three or less, that would be awesome, thank you.
Sure. Mayor Pro Tem Yao?
Um uh I actually had a concern, but Gina, you briefly addressed it even before I had the chance to ask that. Um so my concern was that I I I can completely understand why we will want to continue the contract, staff already know how to use it. Uh but with that being said, it it, I was hoping to see some sort of comparison between pricing, uh for pricing between companies. But uh I know you briefly mentioned that it's, it's uh the price range is um, what was the wording that you used, competitive or?
It is competitive and this one uh was uh very good, well-priced within range, because some of the other ones that we looked into, the platform is changing. I wanna say we explored four different ones, we did about three to four months worth of research and we actually went to different city halls to see the si- the software in action. And uh through our contacts, professional contacts, asked questions, is this working for you, is this not working for you? Because we knew that the Excela contract was gonna come up for renewal and we had to make a decision, should we go for a new system and spend another several hundred thousand dollars upfront and then pay the maintenance fee? Or should we continue with Excela and go forth, we wanted to be able to provide that option, so yes, we did do that research.
Thank you. In that case, then I don't have any other question.
Alright, let's move to uh public comment, Mark, is there any public comments?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Alright, then we'll go for continued discussion, um I I have, I have just kind of a concern with just the, the pricing model a little bit. If you go back to two thousand fifteen, where it was forty-five thousand, based on twenty users, it's about two thousand two hundred sixty dollars a user, let's say, right? So if you were to add thirty users to that per-user cost at twenty-two sixty-eight, it, our cost would be about twen- sixty-eight thousand dollars. So from five years, what would be a sixty-eight thousand dollar cost is now eighty-seven thousand dollars in that first year. I have a problem with that type of increase year after year for five years, it's, that's very high. Can you explain to me why your increases are five percent, what basis that are on it, cause it it seems to be relatively high based on it? And if we're negotiating three years, I do appreciate the negotiation at lowering the rate from going from five to three percent, and I, I think that's smart, and I appreciate our staff working on that. But I also have a problem with just that per-user cost, because we're actually almost dou- in essence, if we look at two thousand fifteen, we're doubling our costs, adding only ten more users. When in reality, in most business models, we'd say you add more users, you're actually saving the cost, we're doubling the cost. So I don't know if you wanna explain that or a little bit and and kinda look into that as well.
Yeah, so as I mentioned before, a lot of it is about the feature and functionality enhancement of it, um I certainly understand the concern of a five percent, which is why when we spoke about, you know, this renewal and what we can do to help the city of Eastvale, we could bring it down. Especially cause it was a, a need to add some more users, um if you look back at the software five years ago, even some of the uh slides that I showed today were not features that we had available. Um I I mentioned that um geography system overlay, that was not something that we have, it's also something that in this upcoming uh version release that we have next month actually, will be, continue to be enhanced. A lot of the mobile applications that we offer now, um were not even available five years ago, or we had, we had one um, you know, pretty bare-bones mobile application. We've been able to, you know, use some of this um, this, these funds with the increased cost to enhance the product and deliver a better product to you all. So you know, although the cost um goes up on an annual basis, the goal is that it, it provides enough um efficiency to the city from the permitting and inspection process. To offset that and actually bring more value back to you.
Yeah, and I understand the efficiency of adding more, I think Gina's kinda already explained like, hey, we wanna be able to connect all the departments using this platform. I just think there should be a greater incentive to add more users to it, there should be an internet, more of an incentive versus the per-price-per-user cost. And even if we were to add the five percent going from two thousand fifteen to now, the really, the realities per-user cost should be than the new price, I mean, Councilor, you put it up there, it should be about eighty-two thousand, instead of eighty-seven, if we were adding five percent year after year. I I just have a concern, again, just with the pricing model in general, it, I just think that there should be more benefit to having more users to it and be able to create those efficiencies. But that's just kinda my concern at the moment, at this, at this, at this moment in time.
Twenty users for um the city of Eastvale, most of the cities had, well, let me say Marina Valley and Rancho Cucamonga had upwards of fifty to sixty users. And granted, they're larger municipalities, we discussed all those options with the other cities, they were, they just offer a superior product. Um and we also have the functionality internally and externally, plus it's cloud-based. So um some systems are able to be, save some money because they host it onsite, but then when it comes to upgrades and then, and you know, being able to communicate accurately, there, there are problems with that. Because then uh it it would cost us to have our IT department be, would be the one updated, so we weighed all the pros and cons uh to be able to come up, you know, with Excela being the clear leader. So, but points were taken, I understand.
Yeah, and that's a good point Gina, the um, you know, I forgot to mention, but just, I mentioned a few times, it's a cloud software and that we have these version upgrades, but you know, the, the, the weight of the actual of resource allocation for the city, um as well as the time spent to do that type of upgrade. If it wasn't a cloud-based solution, it also, you know, plays into the overall cost of the software.
Mayor, if I might just add, this is a really an economic development tool, so that our developers and, and projects can be tracked and, and processed through the city in a timely fashion. Time is money for our developers and we're trying to streamline our economic and our approval process and tracking, and there's a lot of moving parts that go into C U P process or E I R or a site plan development. And um and if we can have this software and have this software uh um and continue this software packaging and, and I have the commitment from our new community development director. Uh Gina, who's now been with us for a year, we've seen her impact in turning pro- turning projects around a lot quicker. Um but she's uh saying, we, we're not, we weren't using this to our, its capacity and its capability, I know how to do this stuff. And we need to be using this so we can serve our developer, and community, and our businesses and our community better, um and, and that's really what this software is for.
Oh, I appreciate those comments, and my, my argument is not about the efficiency of the program, my, my, my argument is just with the pricing structure of how it is. I, I completely understand why we'd wanna use it and the efficiency, and that's kinda things we've been pushing through all our departments, is use better tools, it, it's just simply the pricing model seems a little wonky in, in how we would do it. But I, you know, I don't, Councilor Rigby, do you get a comment?
Yeah, um. Who, so we have twenty users going to thirty users, who are these thirty users?
So we have the fire department, we, we'll have the police depart- the R S O, cause they review plans, um our, our safety team, our community enhancement safety team. Our, our fire marshal, our planners, our engineers, our contract staff, um our, our attorneys, our finance, um so a, a number of users.
And these are all basically heads of departments, or is it all staff members?
It's at all levels.
So this would be anybody that has anything to do with the plan check permitting process and also with finance, because the integration at the end of the day, from the deposits that come in on our ability to process them, we also have to integrate that back to our general fund. Uh in our, our accounting system and software, so there are several representatives uh that will need to be able to have licenses. And again, like I said, right now, are, uh there are divisions in the city that are involved in the development review process, but they're involved in it manually. If we were to increase the number of licenses, then we can have everybody have an electronic dashboard that comes up, they know exactly what permits they're working on for the day and uh when the responses are going to be due. And then we have uh automatic inspection, also being able to check things electronically, inspect them electronically, and to add to um Mr. Jones's list. We also have an entire inspection team through the Inner West and through the uh Michael Baker teams that also need to be able to access the software. So we're, we're expanding in the sense that we're not just focused on just the building aspect, we would need to integrate planning and engineering and uh our finance team. And also have that public portal so that our individual business owners, when they call, they don't have to wait or find out what the status of their permit is. They can just click online and they can do that twenty-four seven and they have the ease of being able to schedule their inspections at their leisure, rather than having to call and then wait for somebody to schedule it. So those are all some of the, the benefits, but I do, I do understand what's something that we talked about internally, but I wanna say, like I said, it is hosted on a web-based platform. So that expense that you might get if you were to host it on a server, you're gonna pay for it in another way by having the G I S team or the um internet, internet team. Or your I T team go through and configure and develop and update and train, so this is a all-inclusive package, just wanna say that.
And where would the funding from this come from?
Uh because this is a continuing tr- contract, the funding has already been budgeted and I think we included the account number uh already in the general fund, it's just on the second page there.
So this is from general fund, this wouldn't be, you wouldn't be able to get anything back from developers on this?
That, yes, that's correct. Would you say we wouldn't get anything back from the developers for it?
Well, we can't right now, but we could if we evaluate our user fees and our development impact fees.
We what, I'm sorry?
So, so, so there is, there is an opportunity, because these types of systems are not unique to Eastvale. So there is an opportunity to recapture some funds for this system and other processes that we do, it's typically so in another municipality I worked for, there was a dollar charged t- towards the maintenance of these kinds of things. Uh because they are a reality, uh when I first started in planning twenty-seven years ago, we didn't have to do this kinda stuff, but today, it's a reality, everything is G I S-based. And so in order to keep pace and to be uh competitive and to attract certain businesses, we're able to do that because we're able to do things faster, quicker and more efficiently. So this is, is, this is how we do business and other cities are doing business that we wanna be uh in, you know, compared to, and we wanna offer excellence, this is how it's done today. It's very different than it used to be.
Councilman Lorimer?
Thank you, and uh well, I, I wanna thank everybody for, for their time, and um I, I think that all the comments from council have, have been very, very good. And um but I, I wanna also highlight that maybe we are losing sight of the forest for the trees here. Um and this is going to be something that will help streamline processes and help us communicate uh across different levels. Um and save time of city staff, so this is good, my concerns from before still remain about the percentage moving forward. But um I, I do think that this is a valuable program and um I, I would like to, with that, I would like to make a motion that we approve this as recommended by staff.
Before we make a motion, what, what are we currently, do we know what we're paying this year, this budget year, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, on this service? I mean, the key, I think part of the key of the vote is to take that five to a three percent, which is nice, and again, I'm not trying to be pennies, but I just, I have to make just to save pennies, but at the same time, I just, just probably adding ten users and doubling the cost, it makes zero sense to me.
I can provide that information to you, I can definitely say that it would been, if we were to extrapolate out from twenty fifteen and add five percent for each year, I wanna say. Be closer to about sixty thousand now.
Yeah, I know that, that ten users alone were around twenty-eight thousand, so it's.
That was the addendum, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it's about s- you know, sixty, fifty-nine, so the current year is, well, like fif- fifty-five or so, without having in front of me, but.
Fifty-two-ish or so, if you.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I was able to locate it, I had, we had it.
Alright, well.
It's sixty-eight thousand.
Okay.
Was for the shit.
Alright, well, with that being said, I, I think, you know, with Councilmember Lorimer's comments, I, I mean, I agree, we, we need to have this program, and I, and I do appreciate the. Planning that's not involved to, to lower the, the, the rate from five to three percent and going over a term of three years, I think that's, that's smart, it's a good idea, I just, just stuck on that one point, but I, that's kinda the decision you have to make, so. But I'm with the Councilmember, I think we should make a motion to prove and see where it lies. Everyone, do we have a motion a second for to approve, right?
We have a motion.
Motion a second.
No one's seconded yet.
Second.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Aye.
Councilmember Rigby?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Yao?
Yes.
Mayor Plon?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you again Gina for your hard work on that, I know there's a lot of questions there, but we, we do appreciate your hard work and all into that, so thank you.
And, and just like we did with the community enhancement and safety software that we're using, and we've seen great customer service results as a result of that, we'll come back in six months after we've been using this for a while. And, and um it, with its all its new bells and whistles and everybody trained properly on it uh and fully implemented, so that we can show you how effective it's being to serve our development community and our, and our permits and processes.
Good, thank you.
So, Mark, if you could just make a note of that, that we'll come back at six-month mark to give an update.
One second, we'll load up our budget workshop, so we are going to go back to our budget workshop and continue on the last portion of our presentation. Which that last portion was basically funding options, and I don't know who, who would be presenting that, Brian?
Uh, it's me.
Amanda, you, Amanda, you have the floor, finish it out on the last item there.
So I, I just kinda wanted to mention that what we're gonna look at here are some funding options for what we can do if we have some fund balance that comes out at the end, after we have nailed down our operational revenues and expenditures. Um and kind of just to, I guess, bring light to the fact, you know, the markets are kind of not doing wonderful right now, so we're gonna keep that in mind, I'm gonna meet with our um investment team and get some advice from them. Um on the markets right now and where they think that's gonna go, so we'll work that into the budget. So first funding option that we have here, these are all tied to the strategic plan, is, this is for the talent and development team to enhance their Neo-Gov software. Um Angelica brought it up in her presentation, that's a twenty-five thousand dollar um piece that would be added in, and this goes under the strategic plan for strength in organizational development. Another funding option is to enhance tr- transparency and open government and finance is to upgrade our software, um and to do that is fifty, that's seven thousand dollars. So we were just talking about um upgrading Excela basically, and this is an upgrade for our financial software. Right now, the payroll division is struggling, I think, with the current software that we have, it does not have the proper capabilities. So identify additional revenue opportunities, I stuck it under the strategic plan item, but in, in reality, a user fee study is also going to find places where we are overcharging. So it's gonna find places where we are undercharging and gonna find places where we are overcharging, undercharging, whoa. Um so the last user fee study that we did was in twenty thirteen, um our service model has drastically changed in the last seven years, and so doing a user fee study is really in the, the organization's best interest. Create value-added development, so the general plan twenty forty, which we've been talking about, um for the next fiscal year, we need about half a million dollars for that. Three hundred and fifty thousand will probably come from the general fund and a hundred and fifty thousand will probably come from S B one gas tax, I know Gina's also working on some grant funding, this may change um as we go on. Create appealing signage at entry and exit points in the city to welcome residents and guests to Eastvale, so exploring some signage options, this would just be going out and looking at some design possibilities. This is a rough estimate that we kind of put together really quick, it may not. put together really quick. It may not cost forty thousand dollars, but this would just be to get some design options at some of the entrance points to the city and looking at what that might require. Evaluate long-term law enforcement costs and sustainability or increased development to fund public safety. So I think everyone kind of landed on option five, I think that was presented, is possibly building that in. Um, right, is that kind of what it's?
That, that is correct. Let's look at the public safety commission's comments.
So we will look at that and then continue to save money and expand reserves. These are our current committed reserves that we have. Library and city hall reserves, eight million. Pension reserves, one point five million. Public safety rate stabilization is at one million. I know we've, we've discussed possibly creating also a police substation reserve. In addition, we have the unrestricted reserve. That continues to grow because of the model that we use to budget for personnel. So we will look at possibly doing two personnel budgeting models and bringing that back. One where we budget it at the current way that we budget and another one budgeting a little bit more on target for what we actually spend so that we can see what that savings looks like and possibly program that for one-time costs into budget. So this is just kind of a brief overview of what we just kind of went over and curious if you have any comments on any of that, if there's something else that maybe we missed that you want us to look at during the budget process. Kind of the input that we're looking for.
Was that the last slide I was speaking?
Yeah, that was the last slide.
Okay. Before I actually go to council comments, I just want to make sure, was there any, Mark, was there any additional public comments that have come before on this?
No, ma'am.
Okay, was it, was there anybody that would want to make a public comment in regards to everything we've discussed and, and we discussed earlier, the first part of the meeting today? And up to this point, been presented, anybody that want to? Okay, with that being said, I'll turn it to uh council discussion and comments and questions. Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, question on the payroll upgrade system. I just got to thinking, didn't we, what, what are we using now and when did we purchase that system?
We're using Springbrook and I believe we purchased that in twenty fifteen, twenty fourteen. And we did not originally have payroll in-house when we purchased that software. We just recently brought payroll in-house last year. Um, and it functions, but it doesn't quite have the functionality that it should have to properly run payroll. And in addition, our project module, we're struggling to properly easily track developer deposits. Bringing Acela online will help us with that, but the Springbrook software, I believe we are seven versions behind. And so we really need to upgrade to get up to date. Um, we can't even change our s- our check stock for AP or payroll because we are tied into a specific type of check stock because the system is so outdated in a sense.
So we did bring payroll in-house about a year or so ago, but that was not through this system?
We're using the system now. It was previously outsourced to, I think it was CBiz, someone like Paychex, kind of a, a thing was doing our payroll. Now we brought it in-house.
Okay, cuz I thought we paid something to bring it in-house.
We may have had to purchase the module, but we purchased the module under an old version. We didn't operate at the time that we purchased the module.
Okay, alright, thank you. Um, and then also on the, the next slide of that, talking about the user fee. And I know this is basically, I mean, this is a tough one to even really estimate, but can you give us some sort of idea if we're spending seventy-five thousand dollars on uh user fee update? What would that bring back to the city? And I know that's a very tough shot, but I think it at least helps us realize how that money is being invested, if that makes sense.
I think, I think the bigger thing is, is just to share what, what kind of magnitude of uh, of fees we come in, uh, come into the city right now. Uh, um, a- and, and so we can see that, but we, it would, it's uh w- we would not know i- i- if the fees would go up or down. Uh, um, we don't have that. Uh, we, we have a gut instinct of what, what fees are under, be, we're undercharging and what we're overcharging. Based on if we're using a contract model or in-house model, uh, one being less expensive or one being more expensive. A- a- and so there's a, a number of different things that we're considering, but the, the magnitude of change that we would bring in as revenue uh from our fees would be unknown at this time, but we can talk about the current magnitude of fees that we collect i- i- is, is.
I want to say, I'm trying to think back to that chart that um was there. It, it's a good percentage. It's like twenty to twenty-five percent of the general fund is um fees and um user fees.
Not to completely hold you to it, we'll only take one of your legs, but uh you would expect this to go up. We don't know how much, but that's why we're, we're really wanting to do this, right?
And my, my guess, when I've done these in the past, is that it doesn't always go up, but certain fees go up and certain fees go down. And so it may be ne- neutral to us, but we're charging the right people the right fees. So we're not overcharging residents or undercharging residents or overcharging developers and undercharging developers. The right entities are paying the right fees for the services that they're receiving. And I think, I think that's prudent as a city to make sure that we're, we're charging appropriately for the services that businesses or, or residents are receiving.
Makes sense. Alright, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Yao?
I have um a few comments slash questions regarding civic center, library, police station, police substation in general. Um, I, I just came back from the um P three conference a week ago. And one of the things that, that struck me was that um seeing, you know, all the repairs that we had or the, just maintaining the fire station, the, just the roof itself. Um, I don't even know how many times we have, we have had to fix it. Um, I, so with that being said, thinking about a police substation, it might not be a bad idea to think about a P three model um as, as we're considering building a substation. And, and also if that is something that we want, if that is a route that we want to pursue. And it might sound a lot, uh, it's actually, it's, it's a big, it sounds like a big project, but I, I do wonder if it would be more cost-effective to combine the civic center, library and the police substation. And the reason why I'm even bringing this up is because from my understanding, from, from the contractors and, and the firms that I s- spoke to, they very much prefer having a bigger project than just like a building, building a police substation, for instance. For them, it's, it's more cost-effective. They can get a better contract. They can um get cheaper. They can get like a better pricing for that. So there's, just throwing it out there, not sure if it's applicable for every.
Ma- Mayor Yao, we, we could.
Not Mayor, yeah.
Mayor Pro Tem, sorry. I forgot your name.
I, 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 I don't want to be chairing this meeting right now.
Mayor Yao, uh, um, gave you a promotion. Uh, uh, um we, we were anticipating uh going out for an RFQ uh, uh, for a P three model. A- and with that P three model, we'll, we'll include city hall, um uh, a library a- and the potential of a, a police substation.
Got it.
They don't all have to be on the same site.
Yeah.
A- and, and we actually have restrictions on Hamner Place that, that a, a law enforcement uh component cannot be there. Uh, um, um, a- and so, um, uh, uh but that doesn't mean that we can't um, um build them all together or build them uh as phases of, of a P three model. Uh, um, a- and so we are looking a- and evaluating all different implementation strategies for the library, the, the city hall and um, and the police substation.
Okay, well, that's good to know. Um, great. And then also and, and I'm just trying to think of, I, I am a huge proponent of having all three. I, I know it sounds ambitious. And it is ambitious, I'm, I'm not gonna lie, but um, and with the limited budget that we have, but I'm also thinking about other poss- like other funding sources, what, cuz actually I just found out Riverside County approved three city libraries um, in, in Riverside County and they are um doing it through P three model. And I, it, it, it makes me wonder why is it that certain cities are getting libraries through the county, but why not us? Um, there's that, but also as we're, as we're negotiating for our franchise waste hauler agreement. I know we have um one of, one of the companies here, but it's also, I, I know, uh, that's my understanding that one of the companies just paid for Ruba Valley City Hall, so that's something that we want to think about as well. Um, and, and also the last question is, how much do we really need to have in reserves if we are gonna pursue the P three model?
Uh, I don't have that answer for you, but uh, um, we will be evaluating that through the P three process.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Rigby?
Sorry, uh, I, I would recommend that we continue our reserves because we don't know for sure that we're doing a P three model. So I, I would strongly recommend that we do not change those until we have a clear direction that we are going with a P three model because if we can decrease those in the long run, once we find out we are doing a P three model, that's great. That's just even better for the city. But I, I would strongly recommend that we do not focus on that now because there's no promise for us to do a P three model. I think we, we plan for the higher and we hope for the P three model of, of trying to get something that's more of a benefit for the city.
And I, I do, I, I want to make that clear that yes, I, I do want to have the reserves there. It's always better to have more than to have less, so um, not, yeah, not against that at all.
Councilmember Lorimer?
Thank you. Um, thank you for the comments from the, from my fellow council members. It gets me thinking as well. Um, and thank you to staff for putting together this uh overview. I, I, I did want to make one comment regarding the um proposed uh user fee study. One, one thing about these user fee studies is they are supposed to um only focus on what true costs are and it, it's not something that we should be making money on or be looked at that way. Um, and, and that's, please understand, it's not geared towards you, council member. Um, it just, I, I've interacted with other cities that sometimes they look at it that way and I know that's not our intention um, here in the city of Eastville. Um, I was not aware about the, the restriction. Uh, it must've come before us, but I didn't notice it, that we couldn't have a police station there uh over on Hamner Place.
It's, it's not a final restriction. We're currently negotiating CCNRs for the site. And it is something that Lewis has requested, but the CCNRs are not final. They obviously have concerns about a more intense use than a traditional city hall. And then the associated security and parking needs that come with a police substation um, that is integrated with their, with their commercial development, but it is not final.
Okay, a- and one of the issues is, is uh the parking has to be behind a wall and, and so that it doesn't fit with a retail uh component to the same degree.
So with a P three model, uh, if, if a private entity decides to help invest, does that mean that their logo goes on all uh sheriff department uniforms and?
No.
I, I'm teasing, I'm teasing. Um, okay, uh, I wanted to, let me go back here to the different slides. I went back too far. And now it's frozen. Okay. Got it. So whi- which one of these did uh staff have question, questions on specifically or is it all of them? Uh, for on pa- on slide eighty-six?
I think if there's just anything that you have concerns or if there's something that you're more interested in, those would be the ones that we would prioritize over others.
We're looking for feedback tonight.
Yeah.
But none of this is an end decision. We're still, this is just a overview and.
This will just help us, give us some direction as we're putting budget together.
Okay. If you say, we don't want to pursue this. If you say, we don't want to pursue this at all, or we really want to prioritize this as money is available uh, a- and we develop the draft budget, which we will bring back to you in May, we can work over the next couple of months to develop that budget for you.
Okay, um, I, I would like to continue to see us put money away into reserves, not that we need to have a overwhelming amount of reserves. But we do have a lot of projects that we would like to see put forward, um, city hall, uh, well, uh, civic center, um, the library, a- all of that. I'm gonna echo councilmember Rigby's comments on that, that I'd like to see us continue to put money towards those uh long-term goals. Because it is something that will be very important for our city, well, is very important for our city particularly as we plan for the future.
Thank you, councilmember. Yeah, I'm gonna, I guess that's, I'll start from that point right there. Um thank you everyone for the presentation and for the, all the different uh department updates and suggestions. Uh, I, I'm with like, you know, councilmember Lorimer, actually, most of my colleagues on this is I think in the last two years, we've made significant investments in our city and we've done some great investments, some big one-time costs, some recurring costs in our, in our staff. Um, I, I would like to see maybe the overall goal to, whether that is in a committed fund, like a, uh, like a city hall, library reserves, or if it's in an uncommitted, just an unrestricted reserve fund, but I'd like to see, you know, some, some type of money put away. I think we've made some good, good investment costs, but I think now's the time to say, okay, how can we kind of build up some reserves for future projects or just for safety nets? I think we're in a great position, but we can be in a better position, I think, for these long-term projects. So I, I would agree on that. Is um, let's start to look at, maybe try to put some money away, thank you. And maybe, you know, it can be in any one of those things, maybe, you know, just somewhere where it's actually in our general fund reserve. Uh, specifically, what we're talking about, putting money away specifically in that specific reserve. So not necessarily fire fund reserve, that's pretty well-funded. Um, but in the general fund, I, I'd like to see that go in and wherever we put it, I think, I'm open to any ideas as far as where we do it. Um, but I, I agree with my colleagues here to look at that direction, to kind of start building it up from there. Um, I, I think we've put ourselves in a situation where, again, in the last years, I don't want to be redundant, but we've made needed investments in our, in our infrastructure, whether it be public safety. And looks, and we'll continue to probably do that even more this next year in our own city hall staff and some one-time projects as well. I think now's the time to look at, okay, we've done those things and I think now it's appropriate to kind of move forward and kind of build those reserves out. Uh, with that being said, I do want to make one comment in regards to the police substation reserve and/or possibly library city hall reserve, but definitely in the, in the police substation side. I don't want to see allocation to the police substation reserve and here's why. Um, I think we have an opportunity, it was our priority goal that we made in January, to negotiate our franchise uh waste hauler agreement. I think there's an opportunity to, to, if not fully fund that police substation, possibly. And I don't know what's out there, but I think going out to bid a- and doing that by this year, having that and being able to do that, we might not even have to use our own money, right? We could, we can either fund that, maybe there's a partial funding of the police substation, depending what happens, what, what type of design we decide to go with. But I would like for the sake, if we don't get there to the, if we don't get to the point of where we've actually negotiated some, negotiated something with our waste hauler, uh, putting that out to bid to our waste hauler uh vendors, uh, then I would like to see at least nothing being allocated to the police substation. I would like to see that allocation come from negotiating these franchise agreements and I would like to get that done this year. Uh, and I think that might be the smartest way to approach. I think there's money on the table that we can absolutely collect from and it'd be the smart way to approach it. And to expedite those processes, whether it goes to a library, city hall or to our police substation. So those are my comments, just based on those two things and kind of the direction I think that we should go in. I wish Joe was here. He, he's actually stuck in Irwindale uh running on traffic, so he's not gonna be able to make it. Uh, but I know he'll be able to make the next uh, the next budget hearing, he'll be able to make it. I'm sure he'll be able to share his opinions as well as I like to know what he, he kind of feels about the, these items, but that's all I have on that, in those comments. Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, completely agree on those, those items. Uh, the one thing that I wanted to, as Amanda, as you were asking kind of for priorities. I think as we look at that funding options total, slide the next slide there. A- as a council, we have held public safety as a w- one of, if not our top priority. Um, so I think we need to continue that. So the policing staffing model adjustments, I think that is probably one of the top priorities that we need to figure out first. Um, reason being is, is because if we let this get out of hand, if we let grow houses continue to go, if we let these things continue to go, we aren't gonna have the businesses and want. If we let these things continue to go, we aren't gonna have the businesses wanting to come to Eastville, we aren't gonna have the residents wanting to stay in Eastville, we aren't gonna have. Um, we aren't gonna be named as, you know, the safest cities in California, safest cities in Southern California, whatever those things are. Um, and that will heavily affect all these other items um that we're looking for too, so I think that needs to be. If not, our top, one of our our top priorities, um is that police funding model. Um, the model adjustment for there, so I think that's something that that I hope that. My colleagues can help support that we we hold that as a top priority.
To- just to be clear, i- you you ca- you all kind of gave a little bit of direction towards. Option five, and 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 if we were to pursue with option five, we wouldn't have a lot to put into any reserves or grow reserves, so just. We, I, I was hearing, growing reserves is a priority, and public safety is a priority, but. Um, the cost of both of those things would be utilizing a lot of our uh surplus, just to. Just to.
Well, I think it'll be interesting to see when we we look at all of our revenues and revenue sources to see exactly where we're at with that.
Yes.
Um, but I think if if we don't, and this doesn't necessarily have to be a long-term thing, this could be something that hopefully maybe we. We do a year and we reevaluate our law enforcement, um, numbers and see where we're at, but I I. I think, and correct me if I'm wrong lieutenant, but if we don't nip this in the butt, it can get out of hand fairly quickly.
If if I may, um, so, on 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 that point, and I I appreciate it, uh, Mr. Jones, um. If I remember correctly, on on the staffing model, that that is an increase of four hundred something thousand. Uh, and so, we we won't have other reserves outside of that?
Well, we have an increase of four hundred and fifty-seven thousand for option five, I I believe it was. A- and then we also have a three to five percent increase for R S O this year, which would be another three to four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, cost increase, so, i- i- it it would be about a. Yeah, it would be a a little less than a million dollar increase this year.
I I I appreciate that clarification, I I remember talking about uh the. The ongoing um percentage increase, but I I thought that that was accounted for within the um four hundred something thousand. Um, but tha- that's not for this year.
No, i- 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 and and that's not to say that we can't cons- you know, we we had a practice of staffing. Where are we, I shouldn't say we had, we have a practice of staffing for the top budget of our positions. Um, which often results in a surplus of money at the end of the year, uh because budgets and actuals are. Different, and that approach was a very small surplus when we had eight people, when we grew to fifteen and now to thirty-one people. Uh, that number, that surplus number in our staffing budget model, i- is is pretty significant in our overall budget. Of a surplus, a model, um, and so, what Amanda was sharing earlier is maybe to get fund some of these things. We can con- consider one-time purchases o- of these projected, um, so we can budget for the top step. But say, we we are anticipating this as a reserve, uh uh from that top step, and we can put that into. Um, uh, a restricted fund, and that might be a way to consider it.
Yeah, I was just gonna make a.
Yeah, I'm I'm sorry, and then the other point of the catch-up that I believe was discussed between the. The the modeling that was used by the state for money to come back to the cities.
The sales tax?
Yes.
So, yeah, the state was having some issues appropriating sales taxes to the right pools, and so there was some catch-up that was done in eighteen nineteen. That we're not gonna see again this year, it was catch-up from prior years, so that's why the revenues were a little high and started to trail off again.
Okay, alright, I appreciate it, thank you.
And and we're gonna be closely monitoring our investments and our reserves and our uh our our economy. Uh, with this pandemic that is in our country at the moment, so. Hopefully, it doesn't last long and it doesn't have a huge hit or cause a recession or a significant correction. But over the next couple of months, before we bring the budget back, we'll probably know some more information.
I I know we've budgeted at the top step of all positions. Do we need to do that?
I think that's a preference of the council, so, um, most cities don't, larger cities, because they can't afford to do that. So for us, it's about a third extra that we budget, for us, it's about a million and a half dollars typically per year, and a city that's a hundred. Million dollars, that would be thirty million dollars if they can't budget towards some other operating costs. So I think we've been small enough that we've been able to afford to do that, and that's how we've built our reserves, we don't have to do that.
I'd be curious to see over the last few years, how many of our employees throughout the year have actually gone all the way up from where they're at to the top step. And have reached that maximum level of what we've budgeted for, um, and if that's not significant. Then I would like to see us, if possible, um, evaluate the option of possibly budgeting. And at maybe whatever's recommended, two to three to four times above, or steps above. Where each employee's currently at, and see what that does to us if we need it, um. I think that's, i- if we need it, then I think that's possibly a way that we can, we can find those uh additional funds.
And there may be value in in bu- in doing the the work to figure out what that top step is. Um, so that you know, you you know your potential, and you know what you may have to budget years down the road, but we may not have to budget for that now. But realizing that that offset maybe shouldn't be spent for operational expenses and maybe be spent for one time.
It it's it's really a theoretical practice to budget for the top step, because there's not too many cities in in California that. All their employees are at the top step, uh, we currently have two or three employees at the top step, a couple. At the next to top step, and we have about four at the bottom step, and the other eighty-five or eighty to eighty-five percent or somewhere in between. Um, so, um, we have a a significant amount of our employees that are are brand new and and are at the. Uh, lower end of of the spectrum of their range.
I'd be curious to see, to evaluate that and to see what you, from the finance department, recommend. Um, coming back to us with that, if it's recommending to continue budgeting where we're at, then that's what we do, but I'd I'd be curious to see where we're at with that.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, I, just kind of an opinion on it, the do- something I do with budgets as well, I I. I like the idea of straight talk, so my point, my point is, and I I mentioned this probably three years ago too, cuz it it was a, we were, we've been doing this for years. And just finding, and I get the principle behind it, it's conservative, I understand that, but it's not realistic. And the problem with when you're not being realistic is you don't know how to vision where you wanna go. So if you don't have a vision where you go, how much money we know you wanna save, it's not about wanting to spend more, it's about wanting to budget. I mean, if you can kind of figure out, and again, this is up to the council, I'm just, I that's why I never really push this on, move very hard, we'll just kind of deal with it, but. I would like someone that's just realistic, conservative, but realistic, it's it's completely unrealistic. It's not even attainable to think that we're just gonna budget on top, it's, you cannot. You cannot have a good ta- a plan of attack if you're not at least somewhat remotely realistic with what you're budgeting, and I get it, this is just a practice we've been doing. But it just helps us kind of know as a council to help make decisions, with some circumstances, some conservatism on the budget. Or there needs to be a level of that, right, for air and all that stuff, but I just think it's way over the pra- like, it's way over beyond practice. Um, and then if you aren't, then there's adjustments you can make with, in 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 a mid-year budget, if we're like, oh, we're off. Because then you make mid-year adjustments, and you make mid-year things, that's what the mid-year budget's for, is to analyze, are we off, are we there, that's the whole point and the intent of it. Um, I I just, I I think for us, if we're discussing kind of Brian said, well, hey, you're gonna spend eight hundred thousand dollars on police costs. But yet you wanna save a million, two million reserves, that may not be fathomable, but, well then, let's see something realistic that we can, so we can be achievable, you know, and so. Uh, tha- that's kind of my, I don't know, it's kind of more of a hot button for me, cuz we we do it every year this way. Uh, but I, yeah, maybe there's some kind of, to what councilmember Rigby said, there's something that you feel that might be best practice?
And we can bring it back.
But the line of realistic, I think that would really help, it's just personal opinion, I don't know, unless my colleagues don't wanna do that, and I'm I'm I will go with the majority. And I won't be offended otherwise, but I would just, I think it would help make decisions for that, so.
And and Mayor, I just wanna clarify, that when when we had eight people or ten people, that that's a very, i- i- the the. But the impact is very small, uh, um, but when we have thirty people, it 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 grows really exponentially, really quick. Uh, um, on on the 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 unrealistic, and so, I don't wanna say. When we had eight or fifteen people, that was a bad practice or anything like that, but we 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 might need to temper it a little bit, or at least. Acknowledge what it, what that number is and say, you know, and and look for one-time costs, so we can always keep the reoccurring costs in there. Um, but and we can look at those, but, you know, when we look at, um, um. Look at, uh, if we look at two or three steps above where they're at, that's still a pretty conservative number when you add up thirty people or thirty-one F T's.
And and the reason, the part of the reason why I'm okay with really having discussion now versus other years, is cuz. Sounds like collectively as a council, we're talking about putting money in reserves, it's not talking about spending, so we're talking about putting money in reserves, so that's why I'm even more comfortable now to have discussion of. Let's be realistic with with, you know, wh- how how do we wanna budget our 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 staffing, right? So, if it were talking about more like last year, we're making some operational investments and some one-time costs. Yeah, that maybe might be a better argument to to budget a top step, I s- I would still disagree, it's not. But I think now for sure that since we are talking about putting money in reserves, I would be very much okay to the idea. That, yeah, hey, yeah, let's let's budget more in a realistic point of view, just, yeah, my my two cents on that, so. Um, is there any other comments or questions, councilmember Lorimer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, I I appreciate the the comments um on on the the top step. Um, although I. I I disagree at this point, but I'm looking forward to the presentation coming back, and the the reason I disagree is that this is. Let us get to this point where we're at with money set aside, um, while we know that we have been playing with a game with this and. Fooling ourselves, it has allowed us, this cushion, to be able to continue to spend towards the future. Even though we're putting it into these separate funds, um, for things that we truly need. It has been a a way of being able to set aside these dollars, and uh unless we are truly willing to commit. Um, towards reserves, uh, and I appreciate that comment earlier, uh, Mr. Mayor. Um, unless we're truly willing to set aside for it, th- this is a a good way to get closer to those end goals. That we have had, um, as a council collectively, um, and, you know. Si- and also, we're 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 in a good time now, um, but things might not always be good. And, um, so, we we need those those savings, those contingencies in place, but. Um, the, at first blanch, uh, I I appreciate it being brought up, and I I do hope to discuss it further. But my my initial, my initial reaction is, um, th- this has served us well, so, thank you.
Real quick, just so I understand, what what was that part that you disagreed on, just so you don't want me asking, cuz I didn't quite understand the part that you disagreed on?
Oh, I'm sorry, the 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 not, uh, s- s- putting money towards the top step, uh, budgeting towards the top.
Got it, okay, understood, but you're in agreement that you're putting money in reserves, right?
Absolutely, but this, but that money would be put towards the reserves, is it, or we could spend it in in other ways, but. Uh, I view it as an an opportunity that we could put that more towards those specific projects, whether it be the civic center or, you know.
So, so. I I think, I think, I think you missed, I, do you mind if I chime in, councilman?
Yeah, please.
So I, so it's kind of potato, potato, it's not, the goal, end goal's the same, the end goal's the same. I'm just saying to have a clear vision of how much we can actually put into reserves, and if you don't, if you can't. Understand what, if you're budgeting top shelf, then you're limiting, in essence, the budget of what you can go to reserves. That was my, that's the intent of it, is that we can budget top shelf, but then what happens is, if. You budget that, and then all of a sudden, well, you know, we don't really have anything to put in reserves, because you budget top. It's not really giving a clear direction of what actuality could, what naturally could happen, so I mean, and and maybe you understand it, I I'm just trying to reiterate. Again, the 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 clarity of it, it's simply, we have the same goal in mind, but it's about the information you're receiving to make, what is that amount? And if you're, in my opinion, you're going to the top shelf, then you're not really getting a very clear understanding of how much you're allocating. We want the same thing, it's about how do you want the information to be presented, I think that's the difference.
So, I'm, one suggestion I might, that Amanda and I also talked about, it is, um, hearing all these different. Differences, a part of it is, Brandon's wanting to know upfront how much he can put into reserves, a- a- and and you wanna know at the end of the year. Let's put whatever's in there in reserves, right, so it's all going to the same spot, it's just, um, so what we can do is we can accomplish both of those things. We can budget at the top step, uh, um, a- and then we can identify what our actual costs and what our budget costs. And that that gap in there i- is what could potentially be identified to go into reserves. Uh, um, and and should that, uh, should that gap, um, um. Come to fruition, then it, then it goes automatically into reserves or something like that.
And and for the sake of just budget practice, doing it at the beginning of having the allocation dedicated is much more than do it at the end. Because you're making, and you're making your staff, your team, work within a refined budget, if staff doesn't have that refined budget. Sometimes you might see other expenditure costs coming up to council. And not having to present, and over expenditure versus revenue, so when you put it there, you're challenging your staff to work within the confines. If you don't, and I can apologize and offending anybody, cuz I'm not trying to restrict staff, but if you don't do that, and you don't put the allocation forward. You're actually leaving a room for more opportunities to spend, that's that's why I want the allocation upfront, and that that's the reason for it.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, completely agree with you, Mr. Mayor, and I think, councilmember Lorimer, you also, and I think, like, has been said. I don't mean to reiterate it, but I I think we're all saying the same thing, it's just a matter of of when it wants, when we want to go there, and I think. Mr. Mayor brought up an excellent point, and if we budget at the top step, that does, and once again, just to say the same thing that Mr. Mayor said is, is. I don't wanna offend especially any of of the management team, but we're giving them that the actual leeway, that they can come back to us at the end of the year. And say, our employees are at top step, sorry, there's nothing left, um, not that they would do that, but. I think this way it helps us to really see, okay, what's our potential of putting into the reserve upfront, and it helps us to allocate that upfront. Um, to see what we are putting into reserve, um, I I think, a- and I think it's. Like Amanda said, that not a lot of cities are doing it the way that we do it, um, we've just been fortunate to be a smaller city, but I. I think we're all saying the same thing, um, that we want to put money in reserves, that it's not, we wanna budget. Not at top steps, we can spin it somewhere else right now, it's, let's budget a little bit lower, so we can, we can put that money away for the long term.
The question's is simply how to get there, that's kind of what we're debating, so, appreciate all the productive dialogue.
And and we, we, we could actually bring back a a an agenda item between now and when we bring the draft budget with some different options for you guys to provide feedback to us. And and have a a more in-depth conversation about this, uh, um, when we have the full council here, uh, um, and. And and get your input, so, um, the the only one challenge is if we don't have a budget for top step. And we go, have to go out for recruitment for our position, um, it, we can only offer whatever we budgeted for. Uh, um, and and that could limit our talent pool that we are attracting, and so, um, a- a- and. And and so, we just have to figure that out as well.
We won't have to go back out for recruitment for anything, all of our employees are staying. They're happy where they're at, right?
Hey, with that being said, so, you know, I don't wanna, I mean, we're almost, we're almost wrapping out the year, and there's one kudos, and then. And and this is kind of more of just direction or no voting, but, you know, kudos throughout the year, um, and again, I'm afraid to almost mention this, I feel like I need to knock on wood. But, uh, we've done a phenomenal job, Brian, I'll I'll commend you, but also our leadership, our management team. Phenomenal job, and another, what seemed to be a very successful year, and what I mean, what I mean by that as far as specifically, is growing our staff, retaining our staff. Again, I think it's like one, we lost two employees this year, so far, knock on wood, but that we're still, but that is a. That is a testament to culture, to the right organization, the right leaders and management, having the right people in place. It, you can't deny what you see, right, and and it's a very good thing, so I I wanna commend all you guys for doing that, and knowing that was part also. That this is something that we wanted to to change at city hall, so kudos once again to all that, you guys have done a phenomenal job. That this is something that we wanted to to change the city also, kudos once again to all that, you guys have done a phenomenal job.
Mister Mayor, if I can, if I can add to that, I I know I I jokingly said you're happy where with where you're at. But I I do sense that, and I hope that that is true, that you are happy with where you're at. Um not to only be proud of us as a city retaining our staff, but being proud as a city in what our staff is accomplishing. Our staff is accomplishing and doing things that obviously we've never done, um that a lot of people thought were impossible to happen in. In the city of Eastville, um so great job to to all of our staff. Um from our city manager all the way down, so thank you for all that you guys do, we really appreciate all that you do, the work that you put in. Um the projects that you work on and and the things that you accomplish and continue to accomplish, so thank you very much.
Okay, so it sounds like we got pretty clear directions, nothing to vote on, but we got a staff, we kinda look good, what we're pretty clear what we're asking, providing the next.
Okay.
Perfect, then we will move to item thirteen, City Manager Report, City Staff Report.
So earlier I started off with a coronavirus update or pandemic or whatever we're calling it now. Uh um we were taking that very seriously and and following that, tracking that, and we spent a lot of our day uh checking in with people on that, so. Um management will be kicking off an upcoming workshop with a Gallup Certified Strengths Coach, Jim Mule. Uh um this Friday, they are coming in on their own time, uh or we are all coming in on our own time from eight to five uh to work on. Uh uh along with Erica will be joining us, uh um uh to to focus on our mission, vision, purpose. A- and identifying our strengths as a team, um so that we can lead this organization to the best of our abilities, combined abilities. Um beginning tomorrow, March twelfth, each home in our community will receive an invitation to respond to a short questionnaire. That will provide the U S Census Bureau with critical information for the twenty twenty census count. The census is a safe and secure and all personal information will remain private and confidential. And it is really important that everybody in your house uh i- is is counted, so if you have multiple families. If you have multiple generations, it you just, your dogs and cats don't count, uh uh um but everybody else does. Um the city of Eastville in partnership with SCOR will be hosting a free business workshop on Thursday, March nineteenth from one to three P M. In the council chambers, this month's topic will focus on taking your accounting anywhere with QuickBooks Online. Um the Eastville Chamber of Congress will be hosting a free active shooter training on Thursday, March nineteenth. Uh from one thirty or five thirty P M to eight P M at the New Day Christian Church. The City Clerk's Office will host another U S Passport Day at Eastville City Hall on Saturday, March twenty first from nine A M to one P M. Walk-ins are accepted and scheduled appointments are not needed, Passport Day is open to the public and all passport applicants and their families are welcome to attend. For more information, please contact our City Clerk's Office at nine five one seven zero three four four two zero. Uh um and i- if you don't wanna do that Saturday Passport Day, you can do any day by making an appointment at City Hall. We are the best customer service for passports, um should the president allow you to travel outside the country. J C S D is hosting a blood drive at the Eastville Community Center on Monday, uh March thirtieth from two P M to eight P M. If you would like to donate, please schedule an appointment with Victoria Reyna at nine five one seven two seven three five two four. You may also visit the redcrossblood dot org for more information. The Eastville Leadership Academy will begin Thursday, April sixteenth, twenty twenty. Sessions will be held for six consecutive Thursday evenings from five thirty P M to eight P M and conclude May twenty first, twenty twenty. This program is limited to thirty participants and applications are now being accepted and due Thursday, March nineteenth. And you have to only be sixteen years of age or older, uh and are either a resident. Or of an employee or work within uh the great city of Eastville. Our, over the course of this free six week program, the academy will present opportunities for participants to connect with city staff. Local business owners, developers and city agency partners, participants will also learn about the operating functions of the city. And how it integrates into the community and regionally in Western Riverside Council or County. The Leadership Academy will cover one of the following themes each week, local government operations, community and economic development, revenues and budgets. Education and partnering agencies, public and public safety, it'll be local government one oh one. Participants will also have several opportunities to participate in community service projects, so we're really excited about launching that Leadership Academy. So please spread the word, and if you have a high school student that is in six uh sixteen years of age or older, please ha- encourage them to apply.
Thank you. All right, we will now move to City Council Communications, League of California Cities.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, um Monday of this week, we had our Riverside County. Division meeting for the League of California Cities took place out in the city of Indio. Uh Councilmember Rigby and um let me, well, actually, we we had a whole crew out there today. Uh or on on Monday, we we had the the city manager, we had Gina and Kimberly is not. Here, so it it was a it was a good crew and um. Unfortunately, it was not as well attended, but it was out in the city of Indio, which uh. But if you've never been, they have the polo fields out there, um it was my first time attending. And um some brave souls participated and a- after we actually conducted business, participated and did. Um what what were what was it called? It was golf cart polo. Uh I uh Councilmember Tesari, did you or Rigby, did you uh, would you do that?
That was the best part about the entire meeting, and I would say that that was probably one of the best division meetings that I've ever been to.
Besides the city manager bringing you dessert.
That too, it was awesome, it was so much fun, it was a lot of fun.
But we really do conduct uh business at these things, um so.
Oh, yeah, we do.
While while there, I I gave an update actually to the to the body um concerning the previous state board meeting. Um and I was sharing what the governor had shared about uh moving forward and his focus on homelessness and housing. With an emphasis on homelessness, um and how the state is going to be looking for a permanent funding source for that. Um which unlikely means a tax increase of some kind down the line or attaching it a fee to something. Um so that is the League of California Cities, um I don't know, Councilmember Rigby, do you wanna share anymore about that meeting?
No, I mean, other than the the golf cart polo, um but it was a blast, but uh uh. The GAD for Supervisor Perez was there and he was, um actually Supervisor Perez was supposed to be there. But due to all the coronavirus stuff, was not able to make it, um but he gave some good updates just on on what they're doing. Um and what they're doing just as a county, uh so it was, it was a really good meeting.
You wanna listen to SCAG as well?
Yeah, um SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments, we had our um monthly meeting. Uh on last Thursday, at that meeting, there was discussion about the methodology associated with RINA. Regional Housing Needs Assessment, um there was no change uh to the proposed methodology. Moving forward, um the city of Eastvale submitted a letter, uh thank you Gina and Brian for doing that. Um this uh arguing against the proposed methodology. The proposed methodology was one that was adopted from the mayor of Riverside, um it is commonly referred to at SCAG. As the uh Bailey Motion, um and and that's after Mayor Rusty Bailey. Um and the intent behind it is a good one, um and the 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 proposed methodology from that. And that is to move housing towards jobs, towards high transit areas. Um which I don't believe the city of Eastvale is. Um with that new methodology, though, the way that the algorithm worked out. Um that methodology proposed by Bailey actually increased the city of Eastvale's numbers over SCAG recommendation numbers. Um the coastal cities, many of whom particularly in Orange County had a serious problem with this uh proposal. Um L A wanted it, um and it actually benefited most cities within Riverside County. With the exception of City of Eastvale and Norco. Um in the I represent Eastville, Hoopa Valley and Norco, and uh Hoopa Valley's didn't change a whole lot. I voted against it, um the the proposal that Rusty Bailey made, and it turns out that that is the. What we will be moving forward with at SCAG. Um it it became a very heated meeting, uh if you were interested, if you want, if you like interesting government, that. Which there is not much of, um that was a meeting where it was interesting, and we stayed rather late and there was. People led with uh their complexions were changing colors, uh it it was it was interesting. But um long and the short of it is that everything stayed the same, so that's SCAG.
So it stayed the same as far as Rusty's motion, or was it or SCAG's already recommendation?
It is staying the same in that SCAG already approved Rusty's motion, Bailey's motion, and that has been submitted to the state. The state already agrees with it, therefore, there was a push to change that. Then go back to SCAG's original motion or towards an alternative motion put forward by. Orange County and some cities in Los Angeles County, but that did not go anywhere.
Well, thanks for that update. All right, W R Cog Joe's not here, so we will skip that, Riverside Transit Agency, Keith, you wanna give that update for?
Okay, um I had A J Mean mundane at Emmett Yard. Um they're gonna give you the two twenty route, which is close to Palm Springs due to low ridership, which is part of the two ten line. Um also, I tend a Vine Street hub mean, they had a post-meet for R T riders to sign the Vine Street hub station. They're working on that now, also as the last R T board meeting, if you weren't there, um we have presentation on electric buses. They'll be coming back in May for that, and then also, just so you guys know, tomorrow, we have a tsunami in Norco City Hall at nine A M. And R C T C is gonna be there to do a presentation on traffic relief, and also. Um we have Norco Horse Week, which is coming April eighteen, I know R T has have a bus out there, so I know um talks to listening. And then after that, um basically, it is there'll be a lot for presentation. And then basically, that is it, and then also, just so, let's guys know the advanced calendar we're having for this year. We have the Mexico Valley Fair, do not know the date yet to be announced, we have the Hoopa Valley Worldio, National Night Out, which is August fourth. And local college Baptist School, which is one of our big things that um Brandon makes we have, and then we have stand bus ride. But we're not sure what the date that'll be, those are the scenes we're having for twenty twenty events, and most time you have all these buses out there, thank you.
Thank you, Keith, appreciate that, all right, Western Community Energy.
Thank you, uh obviously, we had an update from Tyler, but one of the things, we had a meeting today, one of the things that was discussed today was. Um there's certain program, there's one particular program that is with S C E that um. That we voted on today to transfer over to W C E to um continue that program. That was the main thing that we went over, and then we also went over an update, program update, obviously similar to what Tyler shared with us. That the mailers are going out for Eastville right now and that uh the transition will start shortly. Um but other than that, that's all for W C E.
Thank you, uh we will be skipping vector control, since Joe is not here, and we'll move to R C T C.
Thank you, yes, uh we had our uh commission meeting this morning, and it was a continuation of. We have a projects committee that I reported on last time for Western Riverside County, and um so. Everything that was approved at that meeting was approved at this meeting, uh in summary, the most important one, at least for this area. Is there was the approval of the fifteen ninety one express lanes connector, and um. So coming over from the ninety one to the fifteen, um one of the engineers got angry when somebody called it a flyover. Cause he says cars don't fly, but um so that did get approved, that project is two hundred and sixty million dollars, so it was approved this morning. Thank you.
I- if I can add, I sat in on the toll policy and.
And thank you for doing that.
Operations Committee, I had to look it up, um but just for those of you that have a transponder, one of the main things that was discussed there. Was the fact of the transponders being switched out, if you do it within a certain time period right now, it's free. If you don't do it within that time period, then you'll have to pay for the transponder, um which they're going to the sticker system for most transponders. Um so that was one of the main things that was discussed, another thing that was very interesting. This was the night after we talked at our city council meeting about on-call services. The next morning, I went to this this meeting, and that was the same item that they had was regarding on-call services. So they did something similar to what we did in approving on-call services, um their amount that they approved was a whole lot higher than our amount. Um but it was kind of interesting just to uh uh for me, being not familiar with all this and with on-call service. Um stuff to see that it was something that they were doing also, so and that was also approved.
Where do you change out the transponders?
It yeah, I was I was gonna ask.
If you uh go online and they will, and you fill out the information there, and then they will send you out. It's basically a packet that's similar to this size, and within it will have a um the sticker, and then there will also be a return. Uh uh envelope package that you'll send your actual transponder back, so.
Also, how would it work for a carpool?
So for carpool, it's a little bit different, it's going to be, it's still gonna be a uh um a transponder. But it's not gonna be a sticker, it's gonna be a different one, so you'll still have to do that, yeah, because with the carpool, you have to be able to switch it between different. If you have two or three or whatever it is, so and that was also one of the things they talked about was um the fact of. Of drivers that are going through the three plus, have a three plus transponder and are not actually three plus. Um so it was kind of a an in- interesting discussion on um the numbers of that. It's um relatively high on people that are actually going through that are not the three plus.
On that note, anybody now considering doing so, um the uh. The same committee in previous discussions, we we have approved money for uh C H P to um staff. Those areas more, so to to stop the cheaters from coming through.
Not only that, but in this meeting, sorry to keep going on about this, but in this meeting, we talked about that, uh Councilmember Lorimer. But we also talked about of a potential ban for, so if you get a ticket. Then you may be banned from utilizing the carpool system at all for a certain time period. Um so it's 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 a real revenue issue for the toll lanes when people are are going through those when they shouldn't be.
Thank you, uh Regional Conservation Agency.
There you go, so I I I actually, I wasn't at the last meeting, cause I was at the conference, Joe was um, I think Joe was there. But since he's not here, here's the species of the month, it's Osprey, it's um it's a type of hawk. It's a large species of hawk, and you can actually find them near Santa Anna River. And I think it's spring, the we are in spring, al- almost there, um it's breeding season for them. And they are, so you they they should be pretty active right now, you'll find them, you can, like, as in like activities, like you'll you'll find them. Um near Santa Anna River, and yeah, it's, that's it.
Beautiful creature.
It is.
I believe, I I actually do think I'm pretty sure this is it, they they actually have this the Chino habitat, so in the preserves, there's a habitat and they actually they have them over there.
Yeah, and and they migrate a lot, like they they cover huge areas, yeah, they're basically everywhere.
Thank you for that, appreciate that, I always appreciate those. All right, uh J J C S E Parks Commission. All right, we we did have a meeting. We already gave an update, we already gave an update, yeah, so no update on that, Finance Committee, we meet next Tuesday. We already did give an update, we already given update, yeah, so no update on that, Finance Committee, we meet next Tuesday, so please join us. It'll be St. Patty's Day, so please join us in. In the average spirit, please. We'll go city council communications, I'll start on the right with uh Councilmember Lorimer.
It was really great with the uh Little League grand opening and um, what was the other thing? Since our last meeting, it seems like forever ago now, but the uh, the chamber with the uh. The tenure was was also great, so. Upcoming, I didn't look, I was looking for osprey sounds. We, I I'm just gonna end, thank you.
Alright, Mayor Prose Meow.
Oh, do you wanna play it? Um, while while we go through the ad, um, yeah, great event at the Little League and, um. I, yeah, I think that's, that's it on my end.
Councilmember Rigby.
Oh, there we go.
Is ready? Here's what it sounds like. Right? See if it gets crazy towards the end. And I got to the silent part of the video, okay, alright, yeah.
Um, just to, I I know my uh fellow colleagues have mentioned it also, but the Eastville Little League, um, opening ceremonies. Uh, Commissioner Dinko, who is our public safety commissioner, uh, chair for that commission. Um, he and his wife have done a tremendous job with running the Eastville Little League over the last number of years. Um, he is actually in the process of transitioning that, uh, he he's, like I said, he's done a great job, so. Um, I know he was recognized there, but I just also wanted to say thank you to him for all that he's done for our community and those youth. Uh, through the baseball program, um, just done an excellent job and at the same time, J C S D for all that they did for making that a successful event and preparing those parks. Um, the other thing, I know our city manager mentioned it, but, um, the coronavirus, there's been a lot of scare, a lot of panic. Um, but I just wanted just to to remind people that this is something that, yes, it is a scare, but it's something that we need to be mindful, that we need to always be prepared for. S- something to happen, um, i- if it's, if it's through food or gas or whatever, just, just always be prepared. Um, we never know, something could happen that can uh close the city tomorrow. Uh, catastrophically or an earthquake or something, so I mean, it's, just because it's a virus doesn't mean anything different. Obviously, yes, be careful, but don't panic, but just, uh, uh, like you had the scouts here this this evening, their motto is. Be prepared, and I think that's just something that we can all learn from, from that regardless of what's happening in the world, that we just always need to be prepared, so.
Dave always comment, oh, go ahead.
If I may, um, I was able to, I ran to the back and, um, to use the restroom and I was washing my hands and I looked for that sign. Uh, about that that we've recently put up in the restrooms and I'm gonna say, I I wash my hands regularly, but. Check out, um, online, the World Health Organization's suggestion on how to wash hands, it's. You haven't washed your hands, so you've washed your hands the, the who way.
The Sheriff's Department also did a a great video on it just recently, also on washing your hands.
Thank you for that, L T, and your crew. Thank you for sharing about Christian Dinko and and Judy as well, I think they've done an excellent job with Little League, I'm glad you you mentioned that. Yeah, just real quick, uh, I I will not be here, well, there's a possibility I won't be here depending on how flights and arrangements work in the next. In the next ten days or so, but uh, Josh will presiding in the next council meeting, so I will not be here. Um, you guys have pretty much touched on everything I was gonna touch on, um, the ten-year anniversary of uh. At the chamber and as well as uh, the the Little League grand opening, so we ran over the uh, opening day. So with that being said, I I have no comments uh outside of that, so our next meeting will be March twenty fifth at six thirty, so thank you again.